Okay. Eric England with the Planning Department. I will call to order today's session of the Planning Board. So I'm starting off speaking because our typical Chair and Vice Chair is unable to attend today. So according to the Planning Board rules and procedures, the Board, if both the Chairperson and Vice Chairperson are absent, the members present shall select one member to act as temporary Chair for that meeting. So do I have a nomination for an Acting Chair of the meeting?
I nominate Mike Pate.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. I have one more item to add, as there are only four Board members present today. Any approval or denial of a case will require all four votes in the affirmative of whether it's approval or denial. A layover can be made by a three to one vote or a four oh vote, obviously. So I will turn it over to the Acting Chair.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Welcome, everybody. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, and I am Michael Pate, Acting Chair. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedures are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us, right up here. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, that have been recommended for layover have already been heard or have perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. If you, the case, this case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and your address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and the applicant states their case. We will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are represented for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try and limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak up first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve or deny or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded on to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members, Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they may be part of the, made part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act can be found in a white binder in this room. Okay? So with that, I'll turn into, I'll turn to the consent agenda items. First. No? Okay. The Board is going to pull off item number 31. It's on for consent, and we're doing that because it's kind of a special purpose, and I want to read a statement that has been made with regards to item number 31. I think it's very, very important. It's kind of unique, and I think you'll get, get a lot out of that as well. So we're going to pull that one off, and I'll probably put that on the agenda probably after the administrative meeting. Okay? So we'll start with consent agenda items. So first one is on consent for approval is case number 13, item number C12-22-234. Applicant is PSG Properties LLC. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of the Omaha Works Industrial Park Replat 16, a minor plat inside the city limits, location northwest of 120th and I Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay? The next one is on for, that's on for approval, or on for layovers, item number 14. Item C3-22-235, C10-22-236, C12-22-237. Applicant is White Lotus Group. Request is preliminary plat approval of the NEC 180th and Military, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R4 and MU, along with a waiver to the present development zone PDZ. Location is northeast of 180th Street and Military Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay? Next item is on for layover is item number 16. And 26 as well is, is also, we're going to call those together unless they get pulled off. So 16 is item number C12-22-224. Applicant is Sean Niggas, Ponca Trails LLC. Request is preliminary plat approval of Ponca Trails, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver to sections 53-8, 2G, pavement width 53-99, sidewalks 53-8, 2B, cul-de-sac length 53-93, street surfacing to allow asphalt pavement and to waive installation of curb and gutter 53-96, storm sewers and 53 point, or dash nine 10, streetscape standards to reduce street lighting standards. This location is 14222 Calhoun Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay? Next item on for consent is on for approval, item number 17, which is C10-22-217. This is, applicant is Planning Department. On behalf of the City of Omaha, the request is rezoning from GI to NBD with approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District, and the location is 3819 North 24th Street. Anyone wish to have this item removed? Very good. So, you want this removed? No?
If, sir, if you want to speak on it, you'd have to pull it off the consent agenda. Otherwise, it'll just be approved by a vote, and there would be no longer a chance to speak. So would you like to keep it on consent, or would you like?
You want to keep it on consent? Did you want to testify on it, or just?
It's approved.
Okay. So we will pull it off consent if you would like to speak. It'll be voted on today, yes. But it'll, it'll be on its regular place once we start the, the regular public hearing. Okay? Pull that off consent, number 17.
Okay, that will be removed. The next item on the agenda for approval, consent agenda for approval is item number 18, which is item C10-22-245. Applicant is Woodhouse Auto Family. The request is approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location is 6625 and 6603 L Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay? Hearing none, move to the next item, number 19, is on consent for approval. Item C10-22-246. Applicant is St. Philip Neri, Blessed Sacrament Catholic Parish. Request is the approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location is 8200 North 30th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Very good. Next is item number 20 on consent for approval. Item C10-22-247, CDD Partnership. Request is approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. A portion of the property is located within the Floodway Overlay District. Location is 7630 and 7660 L Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Very good. Next is item number 21 on consent for approval. Item C10-22-248. Applicant is Dennis Bright. Request is rezoning from GI to R5. Location 1714 Sailor Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Very good. Next is item number 22. It's on consent for approval. Item C10-22-249. Applicant is Sergio Mora, SJ Mora LLC. The request is rezoning from GI to CC with approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay MCC District. Location is 2905 and 2907 Q Street. Does anyone wish to have this item removed? Very good. Next item on consent is item number 24 on for approval. Item number C10-22-261. Applicant is Tyson Foods. Request is rezoning from CC and GI to GI with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location is 13125 Q Street and 5616 Harry Anderson Avenue. Does anyone wish to have this item removed? Very good. Next item on consent is item 25 on for approval. Item C8-22-253. Applicant is Omaha Cellular Telephone Company, doing business as Verizon Wireless. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow a broadcasting tower to be located in the R5 District with a waiver of section 55-206, height to allow a 100-foot tall tower. Location is 2002 M Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay? Next item on for consent is item number 25 on for approval. Case number C8-22-253. Applicant is, oh, I'm sorry. 26. I just read that. Number 26. Item number 26 on for layover. Thank you. Case number C8-22-255, C7-22-259. Applicant is Sean Niggas, Ponca Trails LLC. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow development located within the North Hills Environmental Resource Overlay District, along with approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to section 55883Q to allow a stable in the DR District. Location is 14222 Calhoun Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Very good. Next item is item number 27 on consent for approval. Case number C7-22-252, C10-22-251. Applicant is Rob Woodling. Request is approval of the conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC District with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location is 4150 North 132nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Very good. Next is item number 28 on for approval. Case number C7-13-139. Applicant is Bethany Lutheran Church. The request is approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R5 District. Location is 4200 North 204th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Very good. Next is item number 25, or 29, excuse me, on for approval. Case number C7-22-256. Applicant is Presbyterian Church of the Cross. The request is approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to section 55883Q to allow religious assembly in the R2 District. Location is 1517 South 114th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? You do. Okay? We will pull that off consent. Number 29. Okay? Next is item number 30 on consent for approval. Case number C14-22-258. The applicant is Douglas County. The request is approval of the vacation of a portion of 47th Street south of Manchester Drive between 48th Street and Calhoun Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay? And then finally, the, oh, we read 31. Pulled that, we pulled that one off. So we'll read that after our administrative meeting. Okay? Is, is the applicant here on case number 31, by any chance? No? Okay. Very good. So I would entertain a motion for those items on consent for approval?
I motion to approve agenda items number 13, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 24, 25, 27, 28, and 30.
Okay? You have a motion and a second? Discussion? Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Here's the agendas right up front here, sir. You can come right up and grab one if you'd like. Okay? Okay? Thank you. Now we entertain a motion for those items on consent for layover.
I move to layover agenda items 14, 16, and 26.
Second.
Okay? Debbie, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Okay? Very good.
So if I could just jump in for a moment, I, I believe I know the answer here, but if I could get a show of hands for those in the crowd that are here for agenda item 15, southeast 180, southeast 180 Maple Crossing, Costco. Okay? And can I get a show of hands? Thank you. For those that are here for agenda item 23, the rezoning 160th and Shirley. Okay? As I expected, based on the correspondence you all sent in, thank you. If, if I could make a recommendation, you've already moved up agenda item 31 prior to number six. I, the other two items pulled off, you might want to consider hearing them before agenda item 15 would maybe just be a recommendation, but that is up to the Board.
Yeah. I think that's appropriate. We'll take those last, okay?
Prior to, so prior to number 15, you would hear number 17 and 29.
17 and 29, right. And 31, and I'll do that. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Eric. All right. Now we'll move into the administrative part of our meeting. This is not, there's not public testimony on these agenda items. The first case is C10-22-183, C12-22-184. The applicant is Denise Garringer Shelter, Shelter Entree. The request is final plat approval of the Purple Martin Hill Lot 1 Outlet A, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R6, and the location is northwest of 180th Street and Purple Martin Parkway. Eric?
Yeah. So this is final plat of the first phase. The Board did just vote on this last month, and City Council approved the preliminary plat on August 30th. This is for one lot and one outlot. The final plat is in compliance with the approved preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R6. Approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement and receiving preliminary approval of the PCSMP from Public Works prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay? Any questions from the Board? Okay? Can I get a motion?
Motion for the approval of rezoning from AG to R6. Approval of the final plat subject to the submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement and receiving preliminary approval of the PCSMP from Public Works prior to forwarding the request to the City Council for final action.
Okay? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, can I record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Thank you. Next item on the administrative meeting is item number two, case number C10-22-134, C12-22-135. Applicant is FHPS LLC. Request is final plat approval of the Colorosa, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Location is northeast of 216th Street and Mount Michael Road. Eric?
Yeah. So the preliminary plat was approved by City Council on July 19th, came before this Board in May. Proposed is 142 total lots, 140 of those which would be single-family residences, including a Bennington Elementary School, as well as one park site. There are a few items that will need to be addressed before proceeding to City Council, but those are pretty standard, some finalization of acceptable debt ratio, some notes on the plat as well as street names. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R4. Approval of the final plat subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report prior to City Council.
Okay? Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Not entertain a motion?
I motion to approve the rezoning from AG to DR and R4, and approval of the final plat subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
Okay? Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Thank you. Item number three, case number C10-21-296, C12-21-297. Applicant is HRC Arcadia Ridge LLC. The request is final plat approval of Arcadia Ridge Lots 94 through 114, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R4, and the location is northwest of Kansas and Laurel Avenue. Eric?
Okay. This is the second phase, which includes 20 single-family lots. They will be coordinating their sewer connections with the previous agenda item Colorosa plat as they are adjacent to each other. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions prior to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions? Not entertain a motion?
I move for the approval of the rezoning, excuse me, from AG to R4. Approval of the final plat subject to the two conditions listed below prior to forwarding to City Council.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Thank you. Next item on the administrative meeting is item four, case number C10-22-083, C12-22-084. Location is Military and 138 Smart Development LLC. Request is the final plat approval of Westbrook Hills, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to AG, DR, and R5. The location is 13712 Military Road. Eric?
Yeah. So this final plat is for the entirety of the site, which is in compliance with the approved preliminary plat, which was earlier this year, back in April and May, Planning Board and City Council. 203 single-family lots, 11 outlots. There are a few items that will need to be addressed prior to finalization before City Council, including some notes and documentation regarding the final plat, as well as debt ratio. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to AG, DR, and R5. Approval of the final plat subject to the five conditions in the report prior to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion for the approval of the rezoning from AG to AG, DR, and R5. Approval of the final plat subject to the five conditions prior to forwarding to the City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Thank you. And the final item on the administrative meeting is item five, case number C10-17-215, Applicant is CC Military LLC. The request is the final plat approval of Copper Creek Lots 93 through 192, outside H-1, outlots, H-1, or I, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R5, and the location is southeast of 168th Street and Military Road. Eric?
Yeah. So the second phase is for 100 single-family lots and two outlots. It's been a while since the first phase came before this Board and City Council. It dates back to 2018 and 2019. There's one major item that'll have to be addressed before proceeding to City Council, and that would be NRD concurrence. There's been some minor modifications since the plat was last in, and there's a large drainage way that feeds into a future dam site. So that coordination and correspondence from the NRD will be required. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and R5. Approval of the final plat subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report.
Thank you. Any questions? May I entertain a motion, please?
I motion to approve the rezoning from AG to DR and R5, and approval of the final plat subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Thank you. And now I'm going to pull off item number 31 off the consent agenda. It's on for approval. I'll just read the, the request. It's case number C17-22-227. The applicant is Ryan Crips. The request is approval of a straight, street name change from Davenport Street to James Fos Avenue. I think I pronounced that correctly. Location is Davenport Street between 22nd and the terminus west of 24th Street. So this case is a little bit unique. It's a, it's a name change, street name change, and I just want to read what the applicant had written with regards to the reason for the request to have the street name changed on this. In his application, James W. Faust is Omaha Central High School's only Medal of Honor recipient. James W. Fos jumped on a live grenade to save three of his squad members' lives. He was awarded the Medal of Honor for his act, and we want to rename Davenport Street to James Fos Avenue to honor his sacrifice. And I'll also read the citation that was part of the application that he received as well. "For conspicuous gallantry and intrepidity in action at the risk of his life and above and beyond the call of duty, Private First Class Faust distinguished himself at the risk of his life while serving as a rifleman with Company E. Private First Class Faust was participating in a reconnaissance in-force mission when his unit formed its perimeter defense for the night. Private First Class Faust, together with three other American soldiers, occupied a position in a thickly vegetated area facing a wood line. Private First Class Faust detected three Viet Cong maneuvering towards his position, and after alerting the other men, directed accurate fire upon the enemy soldiers, silencing two of them. The third Viet Cong soldier managed to escape in the thick vegetation after throwing a hand grenade into Private First Class Faust's position, and without hesitation, Private First Class Faust shouted a warning to his comrades and leaped upon the lethal explosion, absorbing the blasts, blasts with his body to save the lives of the three men in the area at, at the sacrifice of his own life. Private First Class Faust's extraordinary heroism at the cost of his life were in keeping with the highest, highest traditions of the military service and reflect great credit upon himself, his unit, and the U.S. Army." upon himself, his unit and the U.S. Army. Patriotism at its best and... Okay. So I know that we pulled this off. I don't know that the applicant is here, but if the applicant is here, would you come up? If not, are there any proponents that wish to speak on this? Any opponents? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. And Eric, do you want to add anything or?
No, you know, I was just going to mention this one to the naming committee on July 28th and was recommended, recommended for approval by a vote of nine zero, obviously very worthy cause for this street renaming. Graduate of Central High School and the street segment is just to the west of the school. So staff recommends approval.
Very good, thank you. All right. Heroism at its best, thank you very much. Yep, so will we record a vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove four zero.
Okay, well now, thank you. All right. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Well now move into the public hearing section of our agenda and the first is some, one held over case. This is special use permits. It's item number six, case number C-8-22-151, C-7-22-168. The applicant is Nebraska Neuro Behavioral Services. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow small group living, non-disabled within 600 feet of another group living facility, along with approval of the conditional use permit to allow emergency residential care in the R5 district. And this was laid over from our June 1st, 2022 meeting. The location is 3013 and 3015 North 95th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please? Applicant's not here. Applicant? Come on up, please. And if you, please, when you get to the podium, please name your, provide your name and address for the record, please. Right up here. It's okay. I'll turn on the mic.
It's on?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Veronica Bush and the address for the location?
Your, your address.
My address. 5515 North 63rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104.
Thank you. So go ahead.
I'm sorry, new at this.
No, that's quite right. So you wanted...
You can talk as little or as much as you would like if you want to describe the project or if you just want to say you're here for questions, either way.
Okay, so the project that we are trying to get approved is an emergency shelter. A lot of the kids nowadays are homeless or they're in the Douglas County Youth Center. So we're trying to do a project to where they'll have a safe place to go. We'll have no more than six children on each side. It is a duplex and we want to give them therapy. We want to make sure that, you know, we're trying to, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
That's quite all right.
We're just trying to make sure that, you know, we give them the best living condition. It's only a 30-day, it's only for 30 to 60 days and then for the caseworker probation officer to be able to put them somewhere else.
Veronica, can I ask, thanks for being here.
Okay.
Where are the kids going to come from?
They, some will come from Douglas County Youth Center, some will come from foster cares that don't want the kids anymore, some off of the streets that's homeless.
Yeah, so your organization has partnerships with those entities?
Yes.
And then is the goal to reunite them with their families or is the goal just to give them right now temporary and then get them maybe to foster care or to another home environment or?
The original goal is to get them back to their family if, if it's acceptable, but if not, then to get them to another living environment that's going to be good for them.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Do I sit down?
You can. We may call you back up, but maybe not, okay? Are there any other proponents? Come on up, sir. Proponents? Opponents, okay, not yet. Okay, seeing no proponents, any opponents? Please come up, sir. And again, once you get to the podium, if you'd enter your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Michael Brandon. Michael Brandon, 3114 North 95th Street. That puts me one block away from the proposed facility. I don't know if you want to hear about the human cost of that particular structure over the years, but I went around and I talked to my neighbors last night and I was told all kinds of weird stories about, I don't even know under what provisions they operate. It is a group home right now, but there's no supervision. People from the group home are out wandering around the neighborhood all hours of the night. I've had neighbors tell me that they've looked out the window and they've just seen this person looking back through the window at them. People are coming from that existing structure and laying on top of people's cars, laying in the streets. I wasn't fully aware because I don't pay attention to Omaha scanner, but I guess a couple of weeks ago, there were police and fire called out to that address because of someone who lived in the facility, put something volatile in the microwave and switched it on to try to blow up the structure. So I'm here to represent the neighbors that could use a break. The neighborhood is tired of having a group home there and we really don't care that much about what noble purpose the applicant has for it. We have youth emergency services, we have the Douglas County Youth Center, we have a lot of different resources already, but I guess if you're going to have a dozen youths in this same building, that's a lot of people. And they claim that they'll have at least one supervisor there at all times, but you've got two sides, two floors per side. So you've got four enclosures where anything could be going on. And doors can be locked, somebody could be having an accident and that takes up all of the, the supervisor's time and what else is going on with the other 11 who are staying I guess I don't have a lot of faith that you're going to vote against it, but I would definitely like to see the size of it limited to how about, let's say, four per side. That's a little bit better sizing. I did an analysis off of the supposed drawn-to-scale plans of the facility right now as it is. There are three bedrooms. One of the bedrooms works out to, it's 9.2 feet by 13.275 feet. And if you're going to put two youth in there, they each get 61.1 square feet. That's the best that they're doing for anyone who's going to be staying here. On the downside, the bedroom I call the north, northeast bedroom, which is between the other two bedrooms, not on the corner, or I, I'm sorry. It's, it's basically on the north side, but it's the midpoint of the structure. That one will offer 45 square feet to each of a couple of kids who were crammed into there. And then the medium-sized bedroom is, it'll offer 55.65. We have, I'm sorry, I'm awfully dry. We have an ordinance, 43-304. It's not in the code 55, I was informed today, yet. The, the 55 part of the code has a provision, 55-7 says this chapter shall be held to the minimum requirements for the promotion of the public health, safety and welfare. If any provision of this chapter conflicts with any other provision of this chapter, any other section of this code or any applicable state or federal law, the more restrictive provision shall apply. So Omaha, because of the boarding house fire tragedy, we have a code 43-304, which is a part of the code. So that section seven, 55-7, has this apply because this is the more restrictive. The, the boarding house code holds a, a number of different requirements for 24-hour monitored fire alarms, a, a fire pole next to the door and in the hallway. It has some limits on the number of people who can stay there, but more pertinent, the, the first person in a room has to have 70 square feet. And the applicant claims that there were 75 square feet available to each child in their responses to the board or the, the planning department's questions for them. That's not possible, not at all, not with the size of the structure. Anyway, so the first person in a room at a boarding house gets 70 square feet. You put another person in with them, they get an additional 50 square feet. That means two people in a room get 60 square feet. There's only one bedroom that can be divided that provides 60 square feet for both of the, the residents there. Also, I don't know whether it was part of the, the consideration of this, there's one tub shower combination on either side. That's the only place that a child who would be in that facility would have to hygienically clean their body. And if you have all the children in that facility, all going to school every morning, you have six people trying to get in to use the tub. There's convoluted passageway between a couple of bathrooms on the main floor, convoluted passageway between the bathrooms to get to the tub and to any other bathroom and to the other bedrooms. I suppose that can be managed with some sort of locking system, but you know, I would think, I, I don't even, I don't even know if we're addressing the mixed-sex possibility in the facility. Will both sexes be in either side of the facility? Will it be male only? Will it be female only? Will it be male on one side, female on the other? But, and you also have, you're going to have 13-year-olds and you're going to have 18-year-olds. You got, in the general population, you've got 100-pound 13-year-olds and you've got 220-pound 18-year-olds. That's, that's a big difference in power dynamic between the people who are going to be there. And you're going to have one supervisor who is supposed to maintain civility throughout that entire facility. Two sides, different, you know, different locks, different doors. I have not yet seen any kind of a proposal as to whether they will just be able to roam the streets as the, the current residents there are able to and how much of a problem that might end up being for our neighborhood as that address has continued to be a problem. So like I said, I, I don't think, I think you're pretty hardcore here. You're not really that concerned about the, the human aspects of, of this and you're not really concerned about the rules that they'll have to abide by, but just on the basis of the, the structural aspects of this, it fails for a dozen people. It absolutely fails for a dozen people. And I guess, you know, like I said, the neighborhood needs a rest, the neighborhood doesn't want it, but I guess I've resolved that probably we're not going to be able to stop it. It's just me coming down here asking you to say, to deny it, I don't think is going to work, but I would require some limitations and I would require some assurances. Oh, also, yeah, after talking to my neighbors, I, there is a provision where the applicant must go and speak to neighbors adjacent to the property. And I can't verify that, that in this case, that none of those people were contacted, but I know of at least one and that effort was not made to have the applicant come and let the neighbors know what it was going to be all about. But that notwithstanding, whatever this applicant says that it's going to be all about, unless a change is made, I guess the City Council has the power, but this permit will run with the land, not with the owner. So even if we believe that they have a wonderful vision and a wonderful mission, the next owner may not be like this person. And what other uses would they be able to do within that facility if given these permits? And that's all I'm really concerned about is not what the promises that were made are, but what the law allows to happen there if you grant this permit. And I don't like our chances. I don't like our neighborhood's chances. It, it is very much damaging to people. We need a break. I don't want to be a nimby, but put it somewhere else or just let one of the other organizations that is already doing this continue to do it. More well-capitalized organizations as well.
We'll bring her back up and answer, ask some of the questions that you had, okay?
All right.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, thank you, Michael. All right, are there any other opponents wishing to speak on this? Hearing none, bring the applicant back up if you'd like to address some of the concerns.
Veronica Bush, 5515 North 63rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104.
Hey Veronica, a couple of things I wrote down that Michael had addressed. How does, how, how does one person take care of supervision for two different buildings? Are there monitor systems? Is there alarm systems when people leave? If somebody decided they didn't want to be there and they wanted to take off, how is, how is that prevented or how is that managed, I guess? And then what are the size of the bedrooms?
The size of the bedrooms, we had an engineer come in to measure all the bedrooms, so they're the ones who gave us the square footage. Then that's what we put down. We hired actually a company.
Is that 75 feet per person?
Yes, so whatever he put down, that's what we went off of. Also, we are going to have monitoring systems as far as alarm system and cameras, but we're going to have more than one staff because we have to have staff for three shifts on both sides.
One per shift, though, right?
One per shift, correct.
So, so one person at night would be taking care of the 12?
No, it'd be two people. One person on each side.
One per side?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Veronica, hi again.
Hi.
How would you respond to the gentleman's concerns about kids laying on cars or kind of roaming the streets at night, if that's, if there's any legitimacy to that or not?
Well, currently, right now, it's a transitional home. So it's kind of, there's no, there's supervision, I believe, during the day and none at night, but these are grown adults and it's a transitional home. What we're going to put here is an emergency shelter, it's more regulated, there's staff there 24 hours a day, there will be cameras, again, there will be alarm system. These, actually, the, the kids have caseworkers, they have guardians compared to the clients that's there now. Again, they're mentally ill, but they are adults, so they don't have to have 24-hour supervi- supervision. So it's two different programs.
Mentally ill that are there now?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To follow up on that, current operation, how many people live in the unit? And you said they are all mentally ill?
That is correct.
How many people?
I believe there is five on each side.
Okay. Are these kids all in, active in school, like attending school?
Yes, well, we don't have the kids yet, but they will be, yes.
Okay, how are they? They don't drive, the application said, so how do they get to and from school? I don't know where the nearby schools are, but.
Well, we'll bust them, we'll have a van to take them to and from school. And they'll have a curfew, so they can't just hang out. And they'll, it'll be a program as well. So we're setting up a program when they get out of school, they'll have a program that, just say for instance, from, if they're out of school at two-thirty, from three to four-thirty, they'll have a program, they'll be in therapy. Some of the clients, when, if they are going back home, we will go into the house, we will still give them therapy, trying to reunite the family.
Can I ask Veronica, who are your therapy providers? The Nebraska Neuro Behavioral Services offer kind of in-house behavioral services and program support? Are you working with another organization to offer therapy and other?
Nebraska Neural Behavior.
So in, within your organization, you have licensed therapists?
Correct.
So if, if, if one of your occupants breaks the rules, what is your protocols? What kind of protocols are you gonna have in place?
Well, it depends on what rule they break, but if they run away, police is automatically called. It just depends on what the situation is, property damage, anything that's violent, police will be called.
What about if they break, break curfew?
They break curfew, I'm sure that we'll have something in place to where they'll get one chance, and then probably the next chance, they'll probably be sent back to the Douglas County Youth Center.
The only other question I have, Veronica, hi. So does this organization operate somewhere else currently, or this will be your first kind of operational showing anywhere?
As far as for children, this would be the first, but currently, we.
The Neuro Behavioral Services is the one managing the adult program?
That is cor-.
And you're swi-
No, no, no. The current program that's there?
Right.
No, they do not.
That's something, so, so where do you operate now?
We operate at one oh-three oh-six Ellison Circle. We deal with DD clients, and we have CFS clients as well that we place in homes, and we also have, we deal with SLP, which is shared living providers, and we place clients with them.
So you said DD, and then can you explain what those acronyms mean? You said DD?
DD is.
Development disabled.
I'm sorry. Yes, development disabled. And then we, we have the DD clients that we place with shared living providers, that's SLP. We also have CFS kids that are the juvenile kids that we place with providers as well. But we don't actually have an organization or a place where we're actually doing shelter for the youth.
Right, this will be your first.
We're placing them.
This will be your first.
Right, so we're placing them with people that they're living in a home with.
Thank you.
So that's why we come across a lot of the youth that's running away, that's homeless, have no place to go, the jails are full, places they're sending them out of the country to, I mean, out of state, like Arizona, places like that.
Okay. Any other questions for Veronica? Okay, thank you, Veronica. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And Eric.
I've closed the public hearing, sir.
Yeah, so there's two different types of use permits being applied for here, small group living non-disabled, and then conditional use permit for emergency residential care. So by the sounds of Veronica's description, it sounds like the current residents are, are living under small group living disabled, which is a permitted use. So as long as everyone living in the home is, is living with a federally protected class in definition of disabled, that would be an allowed use and separate from what is being proposed, so I just wanted to clarify that. You know, we did hear from, from Michael Brandon about concerns with the residential or the, the size of the bedrooms, and, you know, we did talk to our permits and inspections division, and mostly what Michael had referenced was accurate about needing bedroom space of seventy square feet. If there was an additional occupant, it's actually under the property maintenance code, and I'm not an expert on that, but talking to one of the other staff members in planning who, who is, basically, there's an additional thirty feet, so a total of one hundred feet for an average of fifty per occupant of bedroom space would be qualified. So if this is approved, the applicant will be required to receive approval of a certificate of occupancy, which would need to check bedroom space and those types of other life safety matters?
Those numbers are incorrect.
Sir. You're out of order, sir. Let Eric speak, you're out of order, sir. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Sir, please, we don't wanna have to call security, okay? So if, if the board has questions of you, they will call you up, or if, or if staff has questions, we can call you up as well. You know, I guess I wanted to make one, make sure that there's one provision that is being followed, and I don't know all of the, you know, the justice system and all their requirements and terminology, but in zoning code, there's a use type transitional living that, that this application does not cover. So I, I just wanna read this here for the record. "A facility licensed or approved by the state or other appropriate agency, which provides for the care in short or long-term overnight occupancy of more than three unrelated persons, any of whom require supervision while under a program alternative to imprisonment." So I just, that is not covered under emergency shelter or small group living non-disabled. So these should not be individuals that, you know, usually that comes up when somebody's on parole and they're serving out the remainder of their sentence, you know, kind of like a halfway house is what you've, what you've commonly heard, or, you know, terms that are, that are used, I guess. So I, I just wanna mention that these individuals cannot fit under that definition, because that's a separate use type, so I just wanted to point that out.
So Eric, can I ask?
Yes.
So how, through their application process for the conditional and special use permit, how will that, that be verified?
Well, you know, I mean, I guess we can have follow-up with the appropriate agencies. You know, there's an operating statement that's been submitted, you know, and those parameters and describe who these individuals are. We did not have that concern, I just, you know, I gave a little pause when, with some of the public testimony, so I, I just wanted to make sure that's clear. Now, if they're in violation of their operating statement, they would be in violation if, if a use permit is approved, and there could be follow-up matters rescinding of, of use permits, things like that. So I'll give the recommendation report. If the board has questions or wanna call anybody else, they can definitely do that. So there are two separate use permits. Staff does recommend approval of the special use permit to allow small group living non-disabled within six hundred feet of another facility, each other, subject to the four conditions, and approval of the conditional use permit to allow emergency residential care in the R five district, subject to the four conditions.
Thank you, Eric. Any other comments? Not, I'll entertain a motion?
I motion to approve the special use permit to allow small group living non-disabled, located within six hundred feet of another group living facility, subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the conditional use permit to allow emergency residential care in the R five district, subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Debbie, we record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four zero.
Thank you. Okay, I forgot to mention, if you were here on any of the consent items that have already been approved or laid over, you're free to stay, obviously, but you're also free to leave if you're here for any of those items that were already on consent agenda, so just throw that out there. All right, now we'll move into the regular agenda items. First item is number seven, case number C three dash twenty-two dash zero-five-five. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is the approval of the major amendment to the two thousand twenty-two action plan. The location is the City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And who are we gonna hear from? Alyssa, Alyssa, thank you.
Alyssa Selachik, Omaha Planning Department, and I'll just briefly discuss the proposed major amendment to the two thousand twenty-two annual action plan. The amendment adds a new activity known as the Ames Industrial Park Phase Two, which would use two hundred thousand, four hundred dollars in unused CBG funds for the construction of a pre-engineered metal building in the Ames Industrial Park. That building will house tenants, which will then employ at least four jobs for low to moderate income persons. That, in effect, is the proposed amendment. Staff does recommend approval, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions? Eric, anything else? All right, are there any other proponents wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, any opponents? Not, I'll close the public hearing on this. Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Entertain a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. We record the vote, please, Debbie.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is number eight, case number C three dash twenty-two dash two thirty-one. Applicant's Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is the approval of the Digs Tiff redevelopment project plan. Location is five-two-two Park Avenue and five-two-two South Thirty-first Street. Don?
Yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. There's two parcels involved in this Tiff project, located on either side of South Thirty-first Street. The west parcel will be developed as a surface parking lot. It's right here on Thirty-first. I have about thirty-five parking stalls. The other portion of the site will be an apartment building with forty-three apartment units. Developers Uptown Properties, managed by Stephen Held. This is an eight-point-six million dollar project. So rendering. They're asking for one million, four hundred twenty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-four thousand in Tiff support, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Don? Are there any other proponents?
Michael C. Carter, one-one-five-oh-six Nicholas Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-two. I'm just here on behalf of the developer, if you have any questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. May we hear from this?
Yeah, we've seen the site before with PURs and other rezoning items. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Entertain a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Any other discussion? Debbie, we record the vote, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four zero.
Thank you. Next item is number, item number nine on the agenda, case number C three dash twenty-two dash two thirty-two. Applicant is Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, and the request is the approval of the fifty-nine oh-two North Ninth Street Industrial Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. The location is five-nine oh-two North Ninth Street. Don?
Uh, yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, again, Omaha City Planning Department. On behalf of the project at fifty-nine oh-two North Ninth Street, this is up near the airport in the business park. It's about an eleven-point-zero acre vacant parcel. Be a project for new construction of a flex space, one-story industrial building of about a hundred sixty thousand square feet. Proposal is for four bays within the building, each of about forty thousand square feet. It'll primarily be a building for warehousing and distribution related to the rail and air transportation systems in the area. The site plan has a hundred sixty-one onsite parking stalls, plus space for about thirteen semi-trucks. The developer is Greenslate Five-Nine-O-Two LLC, managed by Clay Vanderheiden. Total project investment in this portion of the city is twenty-one-point-seven million dollars. They're requesting three million, two hundred thousand dollars in Tiff support. This is in an extremely blighted area, so it is a twenty-year Tiff project, and this meets all the criteria for the Tiff program. It's an appropriate use for the area, and it complies with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Okay, are there any other proponents wishing to speak on this?
Clay Vanderheiden, three-five-five-five Farnham Street, here on behalf of the developer, happy to ask, answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Staff recommends approval.
Okay, any need to motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Debbie, we record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four zero.
Thank you. All right, next, we're gonna take items number ten and twelve together, they're related, so we'll take those together. First item is number ten, which is case number C three dash two-two dash two-three-three. Applicant's Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is the approval of the amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan to allow a convenience mixed-use center, ten acres, to be designated at the intersection. The location is two hundred sixteenth and Harrison Street. Case number twelve is case numbers, case number twelve is C three dash two-two dash two-three-eight, C ten dash two-two dash two-three-nine, C twelve dash two-two dash two-four-zero. The applicant is Midwest One Development Company LLC. Preliminary, the request is a preliminary plat approval of the Coventry Wood, a subdivision outside the city limits, with rezoning from AG to DR, R four and R six, along with a waiver of the present development zone, PDZ. Location is northeast of two hundred sixteenth and Harrison Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen Forty West Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, well, and the City of Omaha, I guess, on the future land use map amendment. What this really is doing is that there's no mixed-use area west of two hundred sixteen Street, so, so west of two hundred and fourth Street would be, the next mile would be two hundred sixteen Street. So this future land use map amendment will allow for a ten-acre mixed-use center at that particular intersection, which then would allow for the proposed development, which is a seventy-nine acre development on the northeast corner that will be up to a hundred and forty-nine single-family lots, and one R six lot that will allow up to two hundred and fifty units in a convenience mixed-use center at this location. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Okay, please come forward, please. And again, if you name, enter your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mona Wilmer, fifty-nine oh-nine South two hundred and sixteen Street, Elkhorn. I guess my question with the ten acres is, what is going in there? Do we know what that is yet? At this point, two hundred and sixteen Street does not go through, it dead ends at my property, which is halfway between Q and Harrison, and it is a gravel road west of the addition that's there now, so I'm just curious, what is the intention?
We'll get you there. Can you describe that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Okay, Larry, would you like to come back up and address that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen Forty West Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Yes, what this future land use map amendment does is just allows for a ten-acre convenience mixed-use center at this intersection. The proposed plat and rezoning that's also before you, which is item number twelve, calls for a hundred and forty-nine single-family residential houses, as well as one lot that will be rezoned R six, that would allow up to two hundred and fifty multifamily units at this location. So they're in conjunction with each other.
Thank you, Larry. Did we answer, did you get the answer?
No, I don't know, is that apartments?
Yeah, so, here, I'll give it a stab from the city. Yeah, so the feature land use map is, is laid out with different size mixed-use triangles, basically, on a map, and it designates how much potential office commercial development can occur at, at an intersection. Related to that, the master plan also allows a certain number of apartment units, either within a mixed-use area or adjacent to. So in order So in order for the city to be able to support the rezoning of the southern large lot to R six, which allows the apartments that are proposed, we have to designate on the map this mixed-use triangle. And basically, it's establishing, so yes, it sets up the potential for office and commercial acres, however, there are none that are being proposed at this time. On the south side of Harrison is obviously not our jurisdiction, so it wouldn't apply there. It could come into play if the northwest corner of two-hundred-sixteenth and Harrison, at a time that may be developed, there could potentially be office and commercial acres that utilize the placement of this new triangle. And, you know, I know it's, it's a map, and, you know, I'm talking about triangles, and it's not easy to see the grid and throughout the city, but we have these at every major intersection. Just as we've continued to grow westward, westward in our jurisdiction, you know, unfortunately, we, we didn't designate areas west of two-hundred-and-fourth Street and probably something that we needed to do, we just hadn't done that at this time. So with this proposed development, and during our review, it, it basically allows us to support and is consistent with, with, you know, the rest of our grid system in the western parts of our jurisdiction.
Thank you. So in effect, what's going to happen is apartments, most likely apartments, and then some single-family housing in that area. If that's what you're looking for. Correct. Okay. Going to close the public hearing. Any questions from the board?
And I'll just, so I'll just add, you know, Harrison Street will be, you know, pavement, two-hundred-sixteenth up to a certain extent will also be paving, so there'll be a lot of changes with the street infrastructure at this time. I know there's some work being done currently at two-hundred-fourth and Harrison, so, but, you know, if this plat is approved and continues on and, and final plat is approved and recorded, then the applicant will have, you know, up to a two-year timeframe, basically, to install those arterial street improvements. So I don't think there's much else that I need to add. We are coordinating further with the applicant regarding the trail comment in the recommendation report, just some flexibility of where that trail should be located, whether it's within Outlet A or if we can accommodate a different configuration. So we look forward to working with them on that. It's pretty standard, other comments that you typically see with preliminary plats, there's no tree mitigation, the wetlands are all being preserved within outlots. We had mentioned the, the R six zone lot in the master plan. I think that's all I have unless there's other questions from the board. I'll read the staff's recommendation. So we will take number ten and twelve as separate votes and motions. So specifically for number ten, this is basically adding the ten-acre mixed-use center to the intersection. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. May I hear a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four-zero.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve then, Eric?
Okay, so regarding item twelve, so I previously mentioned two-hundred-sixteenth Street. I, I didn't catch where the opponent's address was, and now looking at it, I think I understand. So just to the east of two-hundred-sixteenth Street, north of the subdivision, the paving of two-hundred-sixteenth Street will not connect to the current gravel road. That will need to happen at a later time in future development and also some potential projects at two-hundred-sixteenth and Q that the Douglas County is currently looking at. So we can definitely provide exhibits to where that paving will end, but it, for the foreseeable future, you know, two-hundred-sixteenth Street paving will stop short of, of the, where the gravel road currently ends. So I just wanted to make that a point. Staff recommends approval of the waiver of the present development zone, approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R four and R six, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to twenty-four conditions in the report.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for the approval of the waiver to the present development zone, approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R four and R six, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following twenty-four conditions.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four-zero.
Okay, next is item number eleven, case number C three dash two-two dash two-six-zero. Applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Their request is the approval of an amendment to Chapter Fifty-Five zoning pertaining to the, to floodplain development regulations. Location is the City of Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. May we hear from the applicant? Is that you, Eric?
Yep, that'll be me. And then we can, after I speak, we can open up for proponents and opponents, if there are any. So, yeah, this is a change to Chapter Fifty-Five zoning code. This is specifically relating to our floodplain development regulations. We have been approached by multiple parties, office, commercial businesses, and something that we have come across as staff, and basically how we track improvements to properties that are located within the floodplain. After further analysis and working with our local, state, and national partners, so basically FEMA at the national level, State of Nebraska at the region, and the NRD at the local level, we've coordinated the proposed changes with them and will be in complete compliance with National Flood Insurance Program, so that will not change as is currently exist. There is one, one big change that, of, of the, basically going away from substantial improvements to only tracking substantial damage. So if a permit is less than fifty percent of the value of the cost of the property, not to get too technical here, but if it remains below the fifty percent, improvements made to such a building will not be tracked over time as such as currently exists. It's basically, the current system has consequences for when properties are trying to bring, you know, continually upgrade their facility or their, their, their building, and, you know, they butt up against a cost limitation that can become expensive to, to require full floodplain compliance for an existing property that doesn't necessarily flood. You know, these aren't properties that are usually suffering from flood damage. And so basically going to a one-time, case-by-case basis, as long as it's below that fifty percent threshold, both for improvements or damages. So I know that's kind of a mouthful. If you have any questions, we talked about it more in the pre-meeting, please let me know.
Great. Thank you, Eric. Any other proponents that wish to speak on this? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions from the board?
Recommend approval, obviously.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Debbie, record the vote, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four-zero.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to skip over to number, number fifteen and move on to number seventeen on the agenda. We'll come back to fifteen. So item number seventeen is case number C ten dash twenty-two dash two-seventeen. Applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Their request is rezoning from GI to NBD with approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District, and the location is thirty-eight nineteen North Twenty-Fourth Street.
Yeah, so I'll start this off, and then I know we have another proponent that would like to speak. So, yeah, this is currently a city-owned property, the native Omaha building. This is going through the process of being sold to someone who would like to develop the property. That sale has not been finalized or completed, but while the city is still in possession of the property, we wanted to make sure it was properly zoned for a Twenty-Fourth Street corridor. So we're getting rid of the industrial zoning, which is not applicable to the site, and applying commercial zoning with an overlay design for the property.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak on this?
Good afternoon. My name is Kyle Keith. Address is twenty-two-ten Work Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-one-zero. I'd like to apologize about the misunderstanding earlier, not knowing how the process goes. I apologize about that.
It's fine.
I kind of just wanted to introduce a project. It's very important to a lot of people in North Omaha, has significant cultural significance to the community. It's the site of the Native Omaha Festival, the bi-annual, bi-annual festival that happens in North Omaha every year, brings a lot of people, a lot of attention, a lot of economic drivers to the community. Hopefully, with this project that we want to develop with me and my partner at NLC to Redevelopment is to be able to, you know, harness the, you know, the tension of that event and the, the one of the neighborhood and community at large for revival and redevelopment. Kind of just wanted to go over what this project is going to be specifically, if anyone had any idea. It's currently a two-floor building, three units on top, three units on the bottom. The top is going to be three residential units, two of them going to be affordable housing. The bottom is going to be commercial units, one office space, flex space for community use for free, and then a restaurant with a built-out outdoor patio. We think this project has a lot of opportunity to be able to bring, you know, revitalization to the, to the corridor, obviously, but also affordable housing, which is something that's in need dearly in the community, and well as a catalyst for future development. So, again, my name is Kyle Keith. If there's any questions, I'll be here.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric?
Yeah, I just want to mention the Forever North Housing and Multimodal Transportation Study that was approved earlier this year supports this zoning designation, as well as the redevelopment, as well as the master plan support. So I appreciate for Kyle coming down and speaking today, and we look forward to getting this property back online with some good use. So staff recommends approval of the ACI Overlay District and approval of the rezoning from GI to NBD.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
I move for the approval of the ACI Overlay and approval of the rezoning from GI to NBD.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four-zero.
Thank you. And we're going to now move on to item number twenty-nine. We'll skip over twenty-three for now, bring it back here in, in just a bit. But item number twenty-one, which has pulled off the consent agenda, it's case number C seven dash twenty-two dash two-fifty-six. The applicant is Presbyterian Church of the Cross. Their request is the approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to Section Fifty-Five dash eight-eight-three-Q to allow religious assembly in the R two district. The location is one-five-one-seven South one-fourteenth Street. May we hear from the applicant if they're here? Not? Up here, come, okay.
Hi. Good afternoon. Ryan Curtis with Leo A. Daly, eight-six-zero-zero, Eden Hills Drive. I'm here to answer questions on behalf of the client and also explain the project to the group. So just for clarity, this, this project is not in relation to the one-fourteenth Street Road project. I have received phone calls from neighbors. Happened to be a week where spray painting was happening and meals, things in the mail were being sent out, so this is not that project, but I will briefly describe what's happening here for the church.
Please.
Thank you for your time. So I have some images, if you pull it up. So here's, here's a rendering of the site, the plan. This is, one-fourteenth Street is on the left side of the screen here. This view is looking northeast. You can see the existing building here. The addition is this, about a six-thousand-square-foot addition to the east side of the current sanctuary. There's also some site work happening to the project, and so there's really two components to the project, the building, construction, and then the site issues. So the building construction is, is a new Northex welcoming center. There's not a new occupant load to the building, it's just a new welcoming space to the church. Church has been around since the nineteen fifty-eight, and they've been proactive with neighbors, and they opened their doors to a lot of neighborhood events. My wife's a nurse, and she's been there for healthcare training events and whatnot. So they've been a great asset to the community. The second part of the project is really related to the site, site work that's occurring. There is a neighborhood just to the south and east, Brook Hollow. Over the course of the past few years, or maybe longer than that, there's been stormwater issues to the site in the event of a big rainstorm. Some of that, that rainfall makes its way into the south properties, and so part of this project is introducing new stormwater plans that are permanent fixes to a short-term problem they've been having. And so that is part of the project site. And so if you look at the site picture here, this is the building addition, and we are connecting the south parking lot to a north parking lot with a road, and then we are introducing two, call it storage basins, they will be dry for, for quality and quantity to hold that water that comes on the site with the increased impervious paving. There is no new load of water that's going into adjacent, an adjacent inlet towards the northeast of the site, so there is no new introduced load that will impact the lakes and what's happening to the east. And again, like I said, all the water that will be maintained on site is being treated for quality and also being treated for those large, large stormwater events that, that well exceed a minimum ten-year mean recurrence interval for those storm conditions. So that is the, that is the extension of the project, and I'm here to answer any questions that may be from.
Hey, Ryan, could you put that map back up, that plan up for me again, please?
Site map.
Yes, thank you. So the neighborhood is where? Is it to the east?
There's, there's homes that occur towards the south and southeast along this, there's a steep grade drop, and then there's, it's wooded, tree-lined, and then there's, there's basically backyards back there. And so what we're doing is, is, again, this is a solution to what has been a problem of, of, of what happens is water runs off. The church has tried to address this with sandbags redirecting direction of, of water. Well, now we're putting in, and they're investing a lot of money into the site to collect water with inlets from the parking that's now being regraded and, and accepting that, that, that stormwater, collecting it, pushing it into these, these storage basins and handling it that way.
So there's new basins?
Yes, these are, these are new basins being designed and provided. The parking is being regraded. There's a lot of regressing occurring to accommodate for the, for the new construction. Currently, the parking is, not all the stalls meet ADA. The church has a wide variety of, of members, congregation, elderly, and so there's benefit to having those stalls being also adjusted and, and meeting ADA compliance slope and those things. So that's also occurring with the, with the project.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Are there any other proponents wishing to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Frederick Stellic, twenty-one-twenty South Seventy-second Street, Omaha, Nebraska, with Gross Welch Marx Claire. We're appearing on behalf of the Homeowners Association for the Brook Hollow condominium regime. We are glad to see that this problem's going to get fixed. I've talked to the engineer here a couple of times, and we think this will solve a problem that's been there in the past. My understanding is they're, they're going to take care of both during construction and then permanently afterwards, and as long as that's done, then we're a hundred percent happy and, and for it.
Thank you, Frederick. Are there any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Please come forward.
Hello. Mary Conway, sixteen forty-five South one-thirteenth Plaza, Omaha, six-eight-one-four-four. My, I'm a resident of, of Brook Hollow, and my concern are just a little bit more detail on what, I apologize, I forgot the name.
Right.
Ryan. What Ryan had said, in that currently this is, all right, how to make that turn on? Okay. This is right now, this was June eleventh, and what looks like that pouring into the lake is our, is our private road. This is the water running down from the church. So what I'm concerned is this water has run through a grass field and through a row of sandbags, and it still comes down like this. So I'm concerned about more detail about what erosion controls will be taken during, during construction, because once the grass and the sandbags are gone, it's going to be a lot of mud. My other question would be with the retention ponds, they're collecting the water, putting them into the retention ponds, and then is that water going to be released somewhere or is it just held permanently? You know, are these just becoming permanent ponds? If it is going to be released, where, where would it be released to? So I would just like, the types of things that he showed here are things that we've seen before, and, you know, taken to fruition, they would be improvements on what we have now, but I just would like a little bit more detail on how this is, is going to take place. But I just would like a little bit more detail on how this is going to take place instead of waiting until, you know, after the fact. And it's like, oh, we should have jazzed that up a little bit more. So, that's all I have. I would just like a little more detail on the erosion.
Here, we'll bring Ryan back up. Thank you, Mary. Are there any other opponents wishing to speak on this? If not, Ryan, you want to come back up and address those concerns she had?
Thank you for those comments. I would share the same concern if that was my backyard. So, this is the solution to what you've been dealing with. So, I will, and there's two questions there. One was the handling of the rainfall events during construction, and then what is the long-term solution? So, there is a, as part of construction, there is a stormwater prevention collection plant that addresses silt and runoff and all that. So, that is a documented and submitted process with the city that we are doing that has been submitted and is being approved by the city as we speak. There will be silt fence and managing that water throughout the entire construction duration. It's approximately twelve months of construction. And the way those programs work is anytime there's a rainfall event that exceeds a certain amount, it'll come out and be inspected for that one rainfall event. And the fence and the workings of that stormwater prevention plan is inspected on a reoccurring interval throughout all of the construction process. So, the construction activity has its own robust nature of making sure that this is being addressed and don't have runoff. So, that is how construction is being handled. The inner workings of the actual column basins, we, some people might call them retention pond, they will be dry. The first basin here is basically the quality basin, so that will basically receive runoff from the parking lot and clean it. And then, once it works its way into the larger basin, that's where it will be held. And once it's held there, the biggest rainfall events, it will dissipate at most within twelve hours. So, for the course of the year, even this past summer, these will be dry basins throughout the course of its life. In the event of these large rainfall events, we will be addressing that. And then, like I said before, there is an inlet that we're, that will be pushing water into, but we're not using that for, we're not increasing any load on that inlet and how that is being worked and pushed to the lakes. And so, the minimum requirement for city code is to design for a ten-year rainstorm. I think we are well over forty years with what we're holding with this basin and how it's being dispersed. And so, that water will be, after it's treated and collected, it will stay in that pond and then dispense itself down into earth, and it will just dissipate, and then it'll just become a dry basin once it's completed. And there is also plantings and requirements for that, too, that's being provided for the system. So, I hope that answers the question.
Hold on just a second. Thank you, Ryan. So, I'll go ahead and call you back up if you have some.
So, so you're.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mary Conway, Sixteen Forty-five South One Thirteenth Plaza, six-eight-one-four-four. So, you're saying that these ponds are going to be dry most of the time, but still, this type of water, I mean, this isn't, this wasn't, this was June eleventh. So, it wasn't like, you know, something out of the ordinary. It was just the spring rain. But I heard you say something I didn't understand when you said something about something, something going into the inlets, into the ponds, tapping into the inlets. And so, I'm not following that because that would be part of our current system that goes under our road. And so, you're planning on taking the water from the north side of the church and tapping into our system and putting it under the road?
Ryan, why don't you come back up here, too, with her together and just maybe explain.
Because here's my concern about that is that is, under our private road, we do have a Nioplas basin. It's three feet deep. It collects water from the south side of the church, from One Hundred and Fourteenth Street and from Pine Plaza. And when that basin, and it's like a barrel, like a three-foot barrel. When that fills with water, then it goes in a trough under the road to an inlet into a series of ponds that we have. Well, that is a three-foot barrel, and it goes into a trough that is one foot wide and two foot deep into a twelve-inch inlet. And that is already doing plenty of work on the south side. So, now, it sounds like, I couldn't quite catch it, but it sounds like the north side water is going to get functioned into that same one-by-two-foot thing. And again, in Brook Hollow, we know nothing about it. And for us, this is a big deal because that was a twenty-three thousand dollar road grate inlet thing that we did. And so, you know, to thirty-two homes, that's a big expense. And so, I don't, I didn't know that we were partners in this. So, that's all I'm just trying to, it's just, see, it's like the details. I'm not getting the details. It's like, well, there's going to be this big pond here, and then it's going to go here, and then it's going to go over there, and it's going to be really nice. And I'm sure it is, but I don't understand.
Yes, there's been, the neighborhood meets at the church for their HOA meetings, and we've had invitations to the neighborhood through their association. I don't know how they communicate with themselves, but they have not been well attended. January was the last time we had them in the project to explain what's happening. Since the letters went out, we haven't had time to do that. But this, we aren't introducing any new water or any new load to that current drain on the north side of the campus. That's remaining as it is. It's already receiving a north parking lot. So, that is not seeing any new demand. What's happening on the south side is we are giving you a solution to fix what's on the screen. So, that is, we don't want that to happen anymore, and this is how you correct that, is we're going to handle that with the system.
So, it's just going to dissipate, is what you said?
Correct. It's sized for, it's been designed, and engineers have designed the depth of it and the size of it to handle those stormwater events, correct? To well exceed what's required by code. Again, the church is going above and beyond here to make sure that this is not an issue for you anymore, so.
And if I could jump in, the city of Omaha does the permitting process for stormwater retention and detention and how that is treated and how that ultimately ends up in the sewer system. So, you know, if there are additional questions, Mary, you could always touch base with our Division of Public Works that reviews this and make sure, you know, that everything that Ryan is saying is accurate. So, if you want to coordinate further with city staff, I would recommend that. But just based on the review, Public Works did not have any concerns. Of course, Ryan has been working with them already on the permitting of this provision. So, I guess if I could have a chance, I would just mention that there will be a need for an impervious coverage waiver that goes to the ZBA, which is supported by staff. That's not uncommon when you have religious assembly facilities, churches, or schools within residential districts because those numbers are lower and they're bigger buildings than your typical housing. So, if there are additional questions that the board wants to cover, that's fine, but I'll read my recommendation.
May I need to close?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to, any other opponents wishing to speak? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing then. Go ahead, Eric.
Okay. Staff recommends approval of major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit subject to the following eight conditions in the recommendation report.
Thank you. Any questions? May I have a motion, please?
I motion to approve a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to the section fifty-five eight-eight-three-Q subject to the eight conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Debbie, will you record the vote, please?
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four zero.
Thank you. I think you two can continue to communicate, and I think you'll both be pleased, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being, thanks. All right. We're going to go ahead and move into item number fifteen now. We'll come back to item number fifteen on the agenda. And before we begin this, obviously, there's a lot of you here that want to testify, and we appreciate you coming out, spending your day here and being part of this process. I just ask you to, if you hear testimony, please try and keep the testimony relevant to the subject and try not to be repetitive as well. If we've heard it, we've heard it. We've gotten all sorts of correspondence as well on both of these cases, too, and we've read them. So, thank you very much, and again, thank you for being part of the process. So, with that, I'm going to introduce the case. It's case number fifteen, and it's case number C ten dash twenty-two dash two forty-one. C twelve dash twenty-two dash two forty-two. Applicant is Stephen Cross, Cross Engineering and Associates. And the request is preliminary plat approval of southeast One Hundred and Eighty Maple Crossing, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to MU, and the location is southeast of One Hundred and Eightieth Street and West Maple Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, One Hundred and Fourteen Forty, Weston Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Steve Cross and Brian Whalen. They are representing Costco on this particular location. Also with me today is Katie Underwood and Shane King, as well as Phil Newwoner. They're the consulting engineers from Olson on this particular project. So, just to kind of start out, just the general area. This is the southeast corner of One Hundred and Eightieth and West Maple Road. As you can see here, here's the proposed site, currently zoned ag. Just to get an idea, it's thirty-six acres in the zoning that surrounds this particular development. You notice that you have mixed-use in R six to the east, you have R four to the south, you have mixed-use to the west, and currently, you have ag zoning to the north, but that is also in the process of being zoned for mixed-use. So, we're seeking here again preliminary plat approval, as well as the rezoning from AG to MU, as I just suggested. The key kind of understanding this particular development is the master plan and the future land use map. This intersection at One Hundred and Eightieth and West Maple Road is a hundred and sixty-five acre mixed-use center. That, what that means is you can have a hundred and sixty-five acres of mixed-use in all directions from that intersection to the half-mile, to the south, to the east, to the north, and to the west. So, currently, with that designation, there are currently a hundred acres that have been utilized for commercial mixed-use. There are sixty-four to sixty-seven acres available today. With this project, it will utilize twenty-nine acres. And so, if this project is approved, there still will be thirty-three point seven-two acres available for mixed-use at this particular intersection. So, this site is not pushing the limits on the hundred and sixty-five acre mixed-use center that's at this current intersection, and it will allow for a lot more commercial mixed-use type development. And what that really means is the infrastructure was sized accordingly, that this was the plan from a long time ago when the future land use map was developed. There were certain hundred and sixty-five acre mixed-use nodes that are throughout our city on various arterial streets within the city. And it's important to note that the hundred and sixty-five acre mixed-use center is the largest mixed-use center that the city has in the master plan, except for the Metro Community Mixed Use Center, which is the West Roads Regency area where I six eighty and West Dodge Road meet. So, with that, we'll get into the project itself. Costco is acquiring all thirty-six acres, and they're developing one hundred percent of the thirty-six acres. What you have here is seven lots and two outlots. The seven buildable lots are shown here, the two outlots. There's one outlot here that's a three-acre detention basin, and then there's another outlot here on the corner, the hard corner, which is the green corner under the master plan and the urban design code that requires that. So, the Costco store is at the southeast location of the site. It's a hundred and sixty thousand square feet they're calling for. And then, the only other current use that is being proposed or provided by Costco is the fuel center here at this particular location, which is lot five. And you'll notice that they were very conscientious in the way they laid this site out. The vast majority of the activity is all on the north side of the building, so the building actually buffers the activity here with respect to parking and the other uses, including the motor fuel station here from the adjacent residential neighborhood to the south. There is some parking on the south side, but, and along this side and this side, but of course, the majority of the activities are all on the north side of the building. This is a three-acre detention basin that will always be, a detention basin, it's permanent in nature, and so, it will not be developed. I would just call your attention to the truck docks are on the northeast side of the building. So, there are no deliveries that will occur on the south side or the east side of the building. Everything is coming in from the north part of the development. And real quick, just to focus in on the motor fuel station that's shown here, there's just one access point in and one access point out onto Evans Street. And just kind of a mental note, the Costco that was at One Hundred and Twenty-sixth and Dodge, that has six pumps and twelve fueling stations. So, with each pump, you have two fueling stations, and it has about a hundred feet of stacking distance, a hundred and thirteen feet of stacking distance. This one, based upon their knowledge and experience in the Omaha market, this one will actually have twelve pumps with twenty-four fueling stations. And the stacking will be almost double what's at One Hundred and Twenty-sixth and Dodge. It's a little over two hundred feet of stacking. So, just some noted differences there.
Hey, Larry?
Yes?
While you're on that, so, I've got a car, most cars have their gas. You just have to go on the left side of the car, the driver's side of the car. I have a car that's on the right side. How are they going to maneuver around in there to get fuel on the right, if the fuel gauge is on the right side of the vehicle?
That is probably a question for Steve Cross. You can come down.
I reserve that for now. You go ahead and finish.
Okay, we'll finish, but I'm sure that they have distances between their pumps that allow for people to maneuver. But my gas fueling is on the right on my cars, too. So, I get it. I feel your pain. So, the balance of the lots, besides, again, the Costco lot and the motor fueling station, are for commercial mixed-use type buildings and uses. The office is shown here on lot two. Oops. Because there is an office requirement, as you know, ten percent office space requirement in mixed-use areas, so we're showing a three-acre site on lot two for the office-type use. It's also, I don't know how well you'll be able to see this, but it's important to note that this shows the, kind of the truck traffic plan. Costco controls all of their large truck deliveries, and they all come from a warehouse in Owatonna, Minnesota. And so, they control how these trucks travel and how they get into the site. And we talked to their operations people, and they indicated that the trucks will travel. And Owatonna is between about, when I looked on the map, between like St. Paul, Minneapolis, and Albert Lee, Minnesota. So, they come down I thirty-five, they hit Interstate eighty, they hit, go Interstate eighty to I six eighty, I six eighty north to Maple Street, which is Highway sixty-four. And then, they travel westbound, and they will be coming in at this location here at One Hundred and Seventy-seventh and West Maple Road. And they'll make their way in, and I don't know if you can see this, but they come in here, they come around, they back in, and then when they exit, they come back out this direction and make their way back. So, all of the truck traffic will be coming off of West Maple Road to the extent that Costco controls it. There may be some local type trucks that might come in a different location. But the large truck traffic and the majority of the deliveries for goods will be coming in from the north off One Hundred and Seventy-seventh and Maple. So, that gets us to our cross-sections. And what we did is we kind of are showing the different views from different parts of the site plan. The first one, you notice up here, it says section one. It's at this location. I'm going to show you a cross-section that is looking north, and this is on the east side of the building. And that's this first one at the top. And so, what you notice, it shows the parking area. The building would be about here. It shows the parking area. Then, it has green space, and then it shows a drive lane. And then, it shows about sixty feet. shows about sixty feet of landscape here, and then you hit the thirty-foot required buffer. And after that, you have an additional forty-eight feet to the multifamily buildings that are on the east side. So, at that, section one, you have about one hundred and ninety-four feet from this location to this apartment building here, so that's, you know, quite a bit of distance. And then if you look at section two, which is further to the south, but on the east side of the building, again, looking north, you have this cross section, and this cross section shows the drive lane. This garage door back here is just for utilities, it's not deliveries, just so you note that. And so it has a drive lane, and then it has a landscape area, or exit from the building to the required thirty-foot buffer yard. That's a hundred and thirteen feet, and then you hit the thirty-foot buffer yard, and then you have an additional fifty feet to the apartment building. So, at that location here, you have about one hundred and ninety-four feet from the Costco building to the apartment building on the east side of the development. So then, as we come around to the south side of the building, we have another section, section three, and so we had a cross section there, and you'll note that Emmett Street on the south actually kind of bends up towards the site. So, this is the narrowest part, if you will, of the residential neighborhood of the south to the proposed Costco site. And section three cross section looks a little bit like this, and again, you have the drive lane, which is about forty-six and a half feet, and then you have the thirty-foot buffer yard, and then you have an additional fifty-one feet to the nearest residential house. So, you have really about a hundred and twenty-five foot separation at that location showing as section three. So then coming further around the building, looking east again at section four, you have now, and this is of course, again, adjacent to Emmett Street, which is shown here, both of those are shown. You have the building, and then you have a drive lane, and then you'll note that there's a parking area, that's the parking area that's shown right here. And then, that's about seventy-one feet from the building to the thirty-foot buffer yard, then you have the start of the thirty-foot buffer, and then you have an additional sixty-five feet from the property line, Emmett Street, and then of course, the rear setback of the residential house here. So, at that location, you have about a hundred and sixty-five foot separation between the Costco building and the nearest residential house further to the south. And the last one I'll share with you is cross section number five, which is just again, a little further to the west, again, looking east, and what you have there is the scenario. So, you have again, the drive lane, parking area, the building shown, that's about sixty feet, and then you hit the thirty-foot buffer yard, and then you hit Emmett Street, and then that whole distance between the property line and the nearest residential house is about seventy feet. So, at that particular location, you're a hundred and sixty-one feet back from the building, so again, quite a distance at that location. So then you get to the fact that this is a mixed use area. We're still working with the planning department on the material choices for the building, but being in a mixed use area, obviously the urban design code applies, and so it has to have four-sided architecture, it has to meet all the requirements of the urban design code with respect to ground level transparency, which is glass, has to have brick and other primary and secondary materials that have to meet the urban design code. I think we're, they've met, and they're pretty close to it. I think there was a couple items in the recommendation report that they will have to meet. So then we get to the public improvements that are being required, again, with not only this development, but with the mixed use development going to the north. I think it's pretty clear that the traffic signal will be warranted at one hundred and seventy-seventh and West Maple Road, so you're seeing that traffic signal at that location. There's obviously a traffic signal that's currently being installed and is installed at one hundred and eighty West Maple Road, although, as you know, to the south, it's still under construction. And then with this proposed development, there is also a traffic signal being warranted at one hundred and eightieth and Emmett Street. And then what you see here at the eighth mile is Evans Street. Evans Street is a right-in, right-out only, there'll be a dedicated right turn in to the center. That's the east-west connection to Evans Street, which ends up going all the way through essentially to one hundred and sixty-eight Street. On the Emmett Street side, you've got the alignment and the same lane configuration that matches with the mixed use development to the west, and then Emmett Street, of course, comes through Whispering Ridge, comes through the target area, and also connects with one hundred and sixty-eight Street. I think what you'll notice with all of our one hundred and sixty-five acre mixed use centers, this is the same configuration that appears throughout our city as far as the right-in, right-out at the eighth mile, the full movement at the quarter mile. So, this matches exactly what is at one hundred and sixty-eight Street, and there's many, many other examples of this same street configuration all over the city of Omaha, especially in our areas that are designated one hundred and sixty-five acre mixed use centers. So, the north-south connection to the Emmett Street is along one hundred and seventy-eight Street that's shown here. Obviously then, that will allow people in the neighborhood to access the shopping center as well as go back home without going on to a major arterial street, which should not ever be encouraged, and connectivity is a good thing, as we know, in our city, and our master plan requires that. It also allows people to come to this intersection that will be signaledized and make either a left-bound south or a right-hand north turning movement, and then of course, you have the signalization on one hundred and seventy-seventh and West Maple Road as well. There is a traffic study that's been done, it's currently under review. One of the requirements, of course, of the recommendation reports at the preliminary plat stage is that we have to install whatever public improvements that the approved traffic study requires. So, if there's anything else out there, you know, we'll have to make those particular improvements. One thing that's important to note that Emmett Street at this location will have to be brought up to a commercial industrial type standard, so there will be some additional work, pavement work in that location up to the main access on one hundred and seventy-eight Street to the entrance into the development. We did have a neighborhood meeting on August twenty-ninth, there was approximately eighty-five to ninety people there, I would guess. It was at Elkhorn High School, the new high school north of West Maple Road. I think mostly it was traffic concerns of the connection into the neighborhood, but as we explained to them, is that, you know, if this access point here was somehow closed, they would actually have to come out onto an arterial street, make a right, come in, right-in, right-out only, and then if they wanted to come home, they'd either have to take Evans Street all the way down HWS Cleveland, and then back to Emmett Street to get back home, or they would have to come out of one hundred and seventy-seventh and Maple, make their way back to one hundred and eightieth, and then come back this way. So, you know, there's lots of reasons why that doesn't make a whole lot of sense from a safety perspective. You don't want people using arterial streets when they can use just connector streets into the development. Also, I know that the public works department has talked about air quality and the fact that you want to minimize the lane miles traveled with respect to air quality. And I would also just point out really quickly, one hundred and seventy-eight Street really goes nowhere as you head south into the residential neighborhood, so people are really not going to traverse from the shopping center into the neighborhood to get anywhere unless you're going home. So, I think that the connectivity and the access that's shown is consistent with the way we've always developed these mixed use centers. I think it will function appropriately with the, you know, access here at one hundred and seventy-seventh, the through street at Evans, through street at Emmett, and the signalization at one hundred and eightieth and Emmett, and also the right-in, right-out on one hundred and eightieth into Evans Street. So, those are all things that we discussed at the neighborhood meeting. We have reviewed the recommendation report, we find the same acceptable, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions as well as the rest of the team and respond to any opposition that may be here today. Thank you.
Larry, at this point, are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish, raise your hand if you're going to speak. Just a few of you, okay. All right.
Larry, did you leave a site plan up there? That might be helpful for those coming up to speak. And if you don't want to use the site plan, you don't have to, just put it off to the side, but for those that don't have something to show, thank you.
Spencer Murphy of Barrett Home Law Firm, seventeen hundred Farnham Street, Suite fifteen-hundred, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight, one-oh-two. I represent Andreessen Meadows Estates HOA, and that is the, in this photo here, and I'll actually use another one. In this overview, you can see one hundred and eightieth, you can see one hundred and eightieth and Maple is up here. The development currently ag land is in this box here. The HOA is in this neighborhood here, just to the south of the development. It's important to note that the HOA is not opposed to the development, the entity, the HOA is not opposed to the development. Rather, the HOA wants to address an access point that will lead cars directly into the residential neighborhood. So, I've circled that on the plat map here in red, and you can see that's at one hundred and seventy-eighth and Emmett, and this is the closest entrance to the Costco, the entrance and exit that is closest to the Costco. And I've reviewed throughout the city, and as far as I'm aware, this would be the only one, the one and only proposed access point into a big box store development that would lead directly into a neighborhood, meaning that you can drive straight and go directly into a residential neighborhood. I also looked in the region, and so I looked at St. Louis, Kansas City, Des Moines, and Minneapolis at Costcos throughout the region, and as far as I can tell, there are no Costcos in the region that have this type of an intersection where you could leave the development and go straight directly into a residential neighborhood. Here's an example of a Costco in Kansas City, and so the building here is the Costco. Obviously, you can see the parking lot. It is surrounded by a residential neighborhood, and then you can see a couple points where they could have connected the Costco to the residential neighborhood. So here, I would direct your attention here, where they have cut it off, it does not actually connect, and same as here. So, there is an example in Kansas City of a Costco right next to a residential neighborhood where they did not connect it directly into that residential neighborhood. The primary concern, obviously, is safety. It's really important to have connectivity in a city, but you don't want to have priority of cars over people and bikes, and obviously, if you have delivery trucks as well. I wasn't able to tell, it looked like maybe there were some yellow lines that utilized the one hundred and seventy-eighth and Emmett Street intersection for delivery trucks, maybe not the ones coming from Minneapolis, but local delivery trucks. And so, there are kids that play on these streets, and we want to make sure that there is safety. This is a photo as you were leaving the proposed development, and this is at one hundred and seventy-eighth and Emmett. So, this is if you are standing facing south at one hundred and seventy-eighth and Emmett, looking into the neighborhood. So, you would be leaving the Costco development, and this is your option to go straight, and you would go straight into this residential development. There are other exits within the development that cars can utilize. We should be pushing cars to utilize Maple Street, one hundred and eighty Street, right-in, right-out, and you can also use Evans Street to get down to one hundred and sixty-eighth Again, the red circle, one hundred and seventy-eighth and Emmett, that is the closest intersection. I would assume that that is going to be one of the busier intersections for people using this Costco, because people are going to want to get out to one hundred and eighty Street and go south. The, I want to address the safety. So, there are kids playing on these streets, and then there's also Manchester Elementary, and that is a school where there are no buses, and you have children walking to school every day and riding their bikes to school every day. And so, the HOA is asking that the board close this proposed access point. Again, this would be the only one in Omaha where there would be a direct access point to go straight into a residential neighborhood from a big box store. If closing the access point is not feasible, then we would ask that you approve it subject to a condition that you change the access point, and I'm going to use an example just down the street at the one hundred and sixty-eighth and Maple Target. This is the super target, one hundred and sixty-eighth and Maple. There is an intersection here at one hundred and sixty-eighth and Bedford, very similar to the proposed at one hundred and seventy-eighth and Emmett, some key differences, but one thing to note is that it is a T-intersection. It is not a road that leads directly into the neighborhood. And so, we would ask that if there is going to be an access point here, you make it either a T-intersection or you make it a right-in, right-out, so that you don't even have, cars don't have the option to drive straight and end up in the residential neighborhood. Because if, you know, you're frustrated coming out of, you know, a busy store at a high-peak time, and there's a ton of cars there, it's all backed up, you're going to be looking for a way out, you might go through the residential neighborhood. If you have a T-intersection here, it is much less likely that you end up in the residential neighborhood. It might still happen, but it'll be much less likely. I would just reiterate the request that we close this access point in order to facilitate safety, and it will still keep the neighborhood connected to this development through other avenues that counsel for the developer mentioned, and/or if we were to make it a T-intersection or right-in, right-out, the neighborhood would still have the option to come up Emmett Street and go into the development and then come out without having to go onto one hundred and eighty Street or onto Maple Street. I would thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks Spencer. Okay, are there any other opponents wishing to speak? Please come forward. If you're going to speak, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and fill these front seats here, that way you will save a little time doing that. Thank you.
William Davis, thirty-one, ten North one hundred and seventy-ninth Street. Along with our other neighborhood members, we're not opposed to the Costco, the safety issue and the exit right there at Emmett is a very concern. I brought two pages of notes, but I'll not bore you guys with repetitive stuff, but a couple of things I wanted to point out as well. Emmett Street right here, I know we saw different pictures, is fifty feet wide. The streets within the Costco development are seventy-eight feet wide. As Larry pointed out, I believe Larry, you said that was sixty-five feet from the development to that first house. If the road is fifty foot, that leaves that house being fifteen foot width right there. That is not a long distance away from the neighborhood. Again, as Spencer said, the main street that gets up to the elementary, that is the main road from our neighborhood as well as Manchester, it all feeds into one and goes up and around to the elementary school drop-off would be going right up that Emmett Street. The T-intersection at Target that Spencer brought up, yes, it's a T-intersection, but that road was also wider. It's also developed for it to be an exit. I do not feel that Emmett Street was developed to be an exit. Evans, where it is cut off today, is developed to be an exit from a mixed use site there in that area. Sixty-five feet Larry, I'm sorry, at the least part down to seventy-five, seventy feet, so I misunderstood there. Most other mixed use around the neighborhood, as Spencer said also, are connected to neighborhoods, but they're connected via access roads, kind of like the Target. Our neighborhood, I do not feel is connected to a mixed use area that way due to Emmett. There is that one hundred and eightieth and Emmett Street being developed today. That is a single lane exit, pouring the concrete, I think, this morning, a single lane. So, if you take Costco, traffic, half of it coming out that way, third of it, whatever it is, into a single exit road that is going to back up our neighborhood and deplete our home values and safety in our neighborhood. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, William. Any other opponents?
Hello.
Hi.
Cali Height, three-three-zero-five North one seventy-eighth Street in Elkhorn.
Cali Height, 3305 North 178th Street in Elkhorn. I'll reiterate some of the earlier points and then make some additional ones and some corrections. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that we recognize the impact of Costco to Omaha. That can be a positive driver of economic activity, and there's good things about Costco. They can be a good neighbor, and that could be positive for Omaha on a whole. I think we can also agree that safety is the number-one priority and responsibility of elected officials of the City of Omaha, of community members. And I know that Costco prioritizes safety within their social responsibility guidelines. So I know that we agree on that. So while we're hearing that this plan is master plan compliant, and a lot of those buzzwords that make sense in the development world are being tossed out there, it just ignores a lot of the realities of living in that neighborhood and the children and family members and pets and others that call the area home. So with that in mind, a couple of key points based on the presentation that Larry provided. So he indicated that Costco can control the times of their truck deliveries and access points. So while they can control their deliveries, there certainly can be an influx of other traffic that is completely outside of the control of Costco and any edicts that they would provide. So that traffic flow is, again, safety and traffic flow is the number-one priority there. The accessibility from the neighborhood, something that was discussed at the neighborhood meeting last week was, "We don't want accessibility into our neighborhood." That was positioned here as, "That'll be great. You all can just drive right on up to Costco." That is not something that we are wishing for. That is something that would happen to the detriment... or that would be to the detriment of the individuals who live there and the preferred and recommended route to Manchester Elementary, which is nearby, and the other five schools. So those are primary access roads for individuals that are going to school. The traffic study that's under review, we asked to see that and have not been provided that traffic study, so would be interested in seeing that. And would also like to point out that with 180th Street closed right now, any traffic studies would be preliminary and obsolete because 180th is simply not open right now. So it'd be impacted by that. And then we also heard earlier that Emmett Street would be brought up to the standard, and there would be construction there. We were told on the 29th, there was no planned construction, and nothing was happening to Emmett. So those are contradictory, and not really sure how to reconcile those two pieces of information. So, in closing, thank you for receiving our comments, written, oral, all of those. Sorry that I talk with my hands there. But just to close, 178th and Emmett, number-one priority would be closing that access point. There are adequate additional access points and traffic flow for those who want to shop at Costco and the other nearby businesses and retail options. Thank you.
Thank you, Cali. All right, any other opponents?
Hello. My name is Megan Duncan, 17757 Spencer Street. I don't want to repeat the things that I said in the letter, and so I will just speak today, assuming that you received that letter and saw those notes. Yeah. Is it both of them? Both of them, okay. Thank you. So just a couple of things from the comments that Mr. Joe Bean made today. In regards to where these trucks are going to be coming from in Minnesota... I'm not from Omaha originally. I've only lived here about two years ago. So I use Google Maps frequently. But if you use Google Maps, the route that you mentioned is not the way Google Maps would bring a truck from that community in Minnesota. It's actually down 35 over 80. And I think if we're traveling along 80, you know, that brings you right to Dodge Street. And even if the route you mentioned is where these trucks would come, nobody gets off 680 at Maple and drives all the way down Maple to hit all these lights. They're going to come over Dodge Street, and maybe that is something within their ability to control. But ultimately, traffic coming from the south is going to be coming west on Dodge and then north on 180th Street. In regards to the traffic studies, there was a conversation that I had on September the 2nd with our county engineer, Dan Kudelik. And he said that he has not seen these traffic studies. And I know that as of Friday, by another conversation that was had with Todd Fitzher, the city engineer, he had not seen these traffic studies. And so in mentioning that improvements would be made after these traffic studies are approved, I'm wondering who approves them? Because it seems as though our city and county engineers so far have not even seen them. And so it seems premature to accept and to vote on these plans before we really know the information. And I realize, again, you know, a lot of buzzwords have been talked about, and we've checked all the boxes for this type of development. But I'm curious to know when the future land use map was developed, and if, when that was developed, it included the development of our high school at Elkhorn North, our middle school just to the north of that. And again, as a new resident to Omaha, I had to kind of look into this, but I... Two of my oldest are in school. And there are six schools in the Elkhorn Public School District that are going to be within less than two and a half miles from this Costco. And so while I realize this multi-use center traffic signal at 180th and Maple is justified, I'm wondering if there is any need to maybe reevaluate that in light of the over 3,500 children who are going to be going to school within two and a half miles of this Costco. The other issue that I discussed with the Elkhorn Public School Office in the last few days is the access on 180th and the 10-foot sidewalk that is supposed to be there. They said that they were supposed to put this 10-foot sidewalk there. If we have a right-turn-in, right-turn-out exit at Evans onto 180th, I'm not an engineer, but I'm assuming that means there will not be a light there, and there will not be a crosswalk. And so as a former pediatric ICU nurse, I'm thinking, "How are these kids or any pedestrian going to cross and travel along 180th if they have Costco traffic with no stop at a right-turn-in and a right-turn-out with just a stop sign?" And as far as air quality goes and public works and, you know, reducing the district... the distance to travel and, you know, having this access point at 178th, if we are going to cut off a 10-foot public sidewalk, we are... I mean, we're... We are... That right there is just going to put a negative impact on our air quality, because there is funding all over the United States from the National Center for Safe Routes to School. And I know that our public school system has looked at that. I know that it has not been an issue for them to look at that and to receive grant funding yet, but this might be an issue where we need to look at that. But ultimately, when people can bike and walk in their community, it is better for all. And so I realize that, well, we were told that that can't be a light there at Evans Street, but as I wrote in my note, it's not consistent with the Dodge stores, with the Dodge store at 120th and Dodge. They have a light just north of Dodge Street at 132nd, right there at Webster Street... Well, Webster's at 120th, but at the Dodge Frontage Road. And then another light at the Hy-Vee north of that. There was one other point that I wanted to ask about after Mr. Joe Bean's discussion up here, as far as the gas stations at this new location. And I go to Costco every week. I have been a Costco member for eight or nine years in three different states. It is part of my weekly routine, and I get gas there. And we know if you've ever been to the gas station... And actually, I think I might be able to answer your question as far as the rights... One of my cars has a right-sided tank. But thankfully, the Costco gas stalls with their hoses are extra-long, and so you can reach all the way around.
And they have it on both sides, too. I finally realized that, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you still have to wait, right?
Yeah. But what, you know, when we voiced this concern in the meeting on August 29th, the gas stations at the Dodge Costco right now are a disaster, up until recently have been a disaster from a traffic standpoint. And it was mentioned here today that they're going to double the stalls here at this gas station. And I think the words were that they're going to almost double the holding capacity here. So if our holding capacity is not even going to be double what the current Dodge Costco capacity will be, what are we going to do with that traffic situation? And so, I'm sorry, I've talked long enough. But in closing, I guess I will just say that, you know, I would hope that we would not have to work with the school board to receive grant funding from the federal government to work for safe routes to school for our kids and not have to, you know, be a couple years down the road and be trying to figure out traffic issues with 180th and these things that haven't been approved yet. And so I just, I think that we have an opportunity now to really thoughtfully consider these issues before we just approve them and pass them through. So, thank you.
Megan, quick question for me, just while you're on the topic. So are you... I hear walking to school. Are you saying that there are students that walk from the neighborhood to Elkhorn North?
Well, at this time, they don't, because 180th is closed. And so it's not possible. And when I moved into the neighborhood, 180th was open just to the south of Maple Street. But shortly after that, they closed it.
I'm just thinking, you know, the Eighth Mile, Evans Street compared to West Maple Road, and just...
What are you thinking, with the right-in, right-out?
Well, just talking about walking from the south on the trail...
Yes.
You know, crossing Evans Street...
Yes.
You know, concerns there, but...
Yes.
Obviously, I'd have a greater concern across West Maple, just thinking about that, so...
Well, I am from Chicago, and so my kids knew how to use a crosswalk by the time they were two. And so we have a really great opportunity right now as this intersection at 180th and Maple is going in, especially because it's the largest intersection capacity, I guess, in the city. So we should be able to put some really safe crosswalks in there that function well. And part of that, you know, is going to take out the, you know, the automatic right when the opposing traffic has the left. But yes, I think that our kids should be able to walk to school, and we shouldn't put that barrier there from the very beginning. I mean, we are three quarters of a mile from the high school and a mile from the middle school in our neighborhood, and so we should not put that barrier there from the start.
I was just trying to get clarification, just, you know, because I'm looking at Big West Maple.
Yes. And if there was a traffic light at Evans, it would allow for the opportunity, a full intersection with a traffic light, it would allow for the opportunity to have a crosswalk there to allow for that city path to be functional. Because it's not just for our neighborhood, and it's not just for our kids to get to school. The path is meant, right, to connect the bike paths along the south and the Flanagan Lake bike path. We've driven our kids up there and let them bike there. But, I mean, our communities are supposed to be able to use that bike path, and they should be able to do it safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Are there any other opponents? Please come forward.
Well, my secret agent name is G. I couldn't wrap my head around being called Grandpa. And so my grandchildren tell me, call me G. And I'm here to speak on their behalf. In my business life, my name is Paul Ellison. I'm an attorney with the Fitzgerald Shore Firm, 10050 Regency Circle, Omaha, 68114. I have Emma, who is eight. I have Macy, who is six. And I have Rory Declan, who's got a fine Irish name but looks like a Swede to me, toe-headed kid. He is three. He is fast, and he lives less than 100 yards from this intersection that everybody's talking about. My family has sustained the loss of my sister to a pedestrian truck accident. It happens, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my grandchildren and ask that you close or make sure the city closes and Costco closes that intersection. It will... There will be a tragedy there. Thank you.
Hey, Larry. Paul. All right, any other opponents? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Trish Crafton. I live at 17702 Spencer Street. I just have one thing I want to point out. I want to show you where I live, and I have three kids. So I am here. That's my house right there. My kids, I have a fifth grader and I have a third grader. Every day, they walk to school. The path that they take is this path here. Anybody else sitting here, do your kids walk to school and take that path? I'm like fuming, upset. I'm not trying to get emotional, but to say that this is Emmett Street and traffic's going to go here and my kids walk there, this is a retirement home where people are out all the time in their wheelchairs and their walkers, walking, do they not? We have constant people who live in our neighborhood who use this area, and we all have seen what Costco brings as far as traffic goes. So if this is open to all this Costco traffic, we would never feel safe letting our kids walk to and from school. I know they've already said Costco opens at 10:00, so your kids would be okay. The gas station opens at 6:00 a.m. People specifically go and get gas at 6:00 a.m. to avoid all that traffic. But if that's not going to be that high of a traffic, still, my kids walk home from school every single day, and they take this route. They walk right along where all that traffic is going to be. So I'd like you just to take into consideration, again, not letting that happen and get into our neighborhood. We don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Any other opponents? Wish to speak? Not Larry? Would you like to come up and answer some of the concerns? So I've got traffic studies, safety, future land maps, crosswalk, 180th and Evans, amongst other things.
Yes. Mr. Chair Member of the Board, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road. I have my team here as well to answer some of those questions, to the extent I don't have the information. But what I would say generally is that Costco wants to be a good neighbor. They, of course, want safety, and they, of course, want children and people walking to be safe. I don't think anyone wants a dangerous situation on any of these surrounding streets. But I would just reiterate that this is a common occurrence. In fact, if you look just across the street, you have a direct access off of West Maple Road that comes through this particular shopping center that goes directly into the neighborhood right across the street. And so, I mean, this does, whether we like it or not, it does occur under our master plan because it supports connectivity. And that's been something that's been discussed for many, many years, in my experience down here with these types of commercial developments. So this is not out of the ordinary. Obviously, we want a safe condition. We think the traffic movements will be safe and that the neighborhoods will not be used for ingress egress, that people will make their movements out onto, directly out onto West Maple Road at 177th where there's a signalized intersection, or they will come out and go right or left in on the right-in, right-out at 180th and Evans Street to make the signal at 180th and West Maple Road. Or they'll leave the site to the south, and they'll go directly out to 180th Street where there's another safe signalized intersection at 180th and Emmett. So I think these access points, you know, east to west through Evans, east to west through Emmett, north to south through 178th Street, really disperses the traffic in a safe manner based upon what's being proposed here. The other thing that I would mention is that, and this came up at the neighborhood meeting, Costco is developing this entire site and this entire center. So the entire 36 acres is under their control. They're going to want to make sure that traffic is appropriate, that they're going to watch the uses. They're not just going to sell to anybody. They're going to make sure that they hold and sell to end-users that are consistent with what they want to see in their development from an overall mix... from an overall mix of uses and types of goods and services that are provided within their center. So I think I've answered all the questions. The 10-foot trail system on 180th Street, if I'm not mistaken, is with the 180th Street County Project, and they are constructing that, I believe. So that was part of the 180th Street development or improvement project with the county. I would tell you that 180th Street clearly will be finished and complete before this development comes online. By the time we get through this process and install the public infrastructure necessary to support this development, you know, you're looking at probably a couple of years out anyway, and then throw the vertical construction on top of that. And so you're out there quite some time before there is actually a mixed-use center in operation. So I don't know if there's anything else anyone wants to add. So I think, I think we're here for questions of you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Larry or his team? Jeff, Public Works, you want to come up and maybe address the traffic concerns that were raised here?
Hi, good afternoon. Jeffrey Swamin, City Traffic Engineer, Public Works. Lots of traffic discussion here this afternoon, not unexpected. I'll try to touch on the points that were brought up. If I forget anything that you were curious about, please ask away. But 180th Street, the construction for that project, that is a Douglas County project, is going to wrap up here this fall. It is constructing a median from West Maple all the way to Emmett. And so what that means is that project is putting in the right in, right out at Evans Street. That was, again, part of the design of that project and part of, influenced by the master plan that the city has. So the full access is at Emmett, and that's a quarter mile away. That's where we would anticipate a traffic signal. The, the master plan, what I'm referencing when I say the master plan is our arterial access management policy. And the reason there is such a policy is because the primary function of an arterial is to move traffic. Yes, it does still have an access component to it, but its primary function is to move traffic. And so we try to control the access to limit the amount of conflict points along the corridor, to propagate the improved travel times through there. So those, that's just a little bit of history, I guess, on what we're referring to when we say the master plan and access. 180th, like I mentioned, is closed currently. The traffic study does include numbers that were taken prior to the closure, and then any numbers taken at adjacent intersections due to the closure are accounted for. It's explained in the beginning of the study. The study is on our desk, it's ready for review, it's in our queue of review studies. We do get a lot of these. And the reason the city traffic engineer hasn't seen it is because he delegates that to the Traffic Engineering Division. So the city engineer, Todd Fitzher, has delegated that to the Traffic Division, which is the division that I manage. And then also on the county side of things, Dan Kudlec delegates that to Jeff Sheersburg, who handles the reviews related to developments that way.
Hey, Jeff, you said the study on 180th Street was prior to the construction. So how do you...
The traffic count that was taken, that's part of the study.
Prior to widening the street, correct?
Right, exactly.
How do you take those numbers now that it's widened and will there be more traffic?
Through the use of a travel demand model.
Okay, so that's taken into account?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. So all the pro-people are reviewing the study as we speak. The Department of Transportation, also, of course, this being a state highway, will be reviewing this as well. The study itself is a, is a capacity analysis study, it's a traffic impact study, but what we're ultimately looking at is capacity. Do the roads have capacity to handle the demand? I, I wouldn't say it's a safety study, that's a separate kind of study and something that Traffic Engineering Division is always accounting for. But the study itself is a capacity study, looking primarily at the arterial, 180th and West Maple intersection. So the, the connection points along there are the primary focus of the traffic study. We work with the developer when it comes to connection points. So Emmett Street will be a topic of discussion, the things we've heard here today will be talked about with the developer. But ultimately, what the master plan also wants to achieve is connectivity. And so what this provides is the people that live in that neighborhood, an opportunity to not have to go out onto the arterial street, whose primary function is just to move traffic and ultimately at a faster rate. With the conflict points that exist on their arterials, we don't want neighborhood traffic going out onto the arterial. We want to have that connectivity. We don't, we know people take their trips based on travel time. And so the regional trips, the people that are coming to Costco, and it's the vast majority of the trips that will be generated by this Costco, the regional trips will not be cutting through the neighborhoods. They will be utilizing the arterials that get them there faster, and they will be turning at the points more on the northern end because that's where all the activity is designed to be at. Now, granted, people going south on 180th would likely choose to turn onto Emmett, go down to Emmett, and then turn south on 180th. Not all of them, it depends on where they park in that large parking lot. So with respect to connectivity, my point is that I think the, the neighborhood trips that, that exist, that are verging on negligible when it comes to the entire amount of trips that go to Costco, we want them using these public streets that are within the neighborhood. And the regional trips that are the vast majority, we want them to be on the arterial, arterials.
One more question for you, Jeff.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And I can't remember who asked this, but they said on Evans Street, if that's a right in, right out, how will people cross the streets on that? Is that, is that anything that...
So...
We wouldn't put a signal there, would we?
No, no, so that, right in, we have lots of right in, right outs on arterials that, they're not signalized intersections, that's not how they operate. There's a stop sign for exiting, and there's a right turn for entering. And the right turns yield to pedestrians, it's a completely safe condition. Stop, stopping at stop signs is a completely safe condition. The unsafe condition would be somebody assigned right of way to go through, and you're conflicting trying to cross. That's the unsafe condition.
Well, Jeff, your division, you can work on specific signage that can draw attention, you know, for pedestrian crossings and things like that.
Right, right. I mean, that's something that we do have crosswalk marking policy that we consider for, for higher use locations. But we have lots of intersections around the city where traffic needs to yield. Turning traffic yields to pedestrians, and that's how it operates.
And then also on, on Emmett Street, if, if this all goes through, is there traffic calming devices that can be installed to, to maybe...
Right.
Keep people from saying, I want to travel down Emmett Street to the east and then, and slow traffic down, you know?
Right, so Emmett Street currently, I don't believe, has any traffic calming devices on it, other than, you could call that roundabout to the, I guess I can point to it here, right here, more of a traffic circle that acts more like a chicane to slow traffic down. So, so there is that there. But the existing Costco over on Dodge-Frontage Road, it originally was built without a connection to a neighborhood. I believe it's Burt Street that's on the north side. And when that connection was made, it relieved the operations at the front door of the Costco there, while not overburdening the neighborhood. And in fact, the neighborhood then qualified for traffic calming via speed humps, and this very well could be a candidate as well for Emmett Street. But that's something that our division does, separate from this capacity study, when we make those determinations.
Jeff, there was a comment about Emmett Street is currently only one lane in, one lane out at this time. With this development, as you're heading west on Emmett Street towards 180th Street, I know the, the site plan would have some kind of turn lane, there would usually be a dedicated left turn lane for southbound traffic.
Right.
And then maybe a, a right bound or right turn lane along with, you know, straight ahead.
Yep, that would absolutely be one of the recommendations that we're looking for in the traffic study, because it's a capacity-related recommendation when you add lanes, and same with the type of traffic control that you identify. So that's something the traffic study will identify for us, and I do anticipate there being an additional lane at a minimum.
Any other questions for Jeff?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. And Eric, you want to have some comments for us?
Yeah, I don't need to touch on many of the details. I think that's been pretty well hashed out. There are a few minor building material requirements that would need to be met if this moves forward accordingly. Larry touched on the intersection and the size of the office commercial. You know, I just reiterate, connectivity, quarter mile, half mile, three-quarter mile, you look all around the western portions of our city, and somebody asked, you know, when, when did the future land use map come about? Many elements of the, of the master plan, as well as that map, came about in 1997. There's been modifications, of course, and changes to different elements of the master plan throughout. But that's kind of, kind of the, the general starting date, and that's really when you see and you look at aerial photography across the city and different developments. You know, if you just think about, you know, 30th to 40th on Dodge Street or L Street or Center, and you have all of the different street connections that are coming out to the arterial streets, and you compare that, you know, to the western parts of our city and jurisdiction, and you have these dedicated three main connections for most, all arterials. And we looked at multiple examples in the pre-meeting, you look at multiple developments on a, on a monthly basis. You know, this is not uncommon, what we, what we hear, you know, from, from concerned neighbors, and, you know, I understand, you know, the fear. But, you know, limiting those connections to the arterial streets does improve safety across the board. And, you know, it's been mentioned multiple times by Jeff and Larry, you know, trying to make sure that we're not requiring residents to have to go out to an arterial street where there is a higher speed, and it is, it is more dangerous. I mean, statistics show if you're traveling in a 45 mile per hour street, it is more dangerous than if you're traveling on a 25 mile per hour street. So has higher-impact crashes, which can lead to more unsafe conditions. So, you know, connectivity between neighborhoods, between residential uses and office and commercial uses are always highly, you know, not only encouraged but required, and something that, you know, has come again and again with developments as we've developed our city west. So, you know, I, obviously, safety is of, of the most utmost concern. Nobody wants, you know, unsafe conditions for kids, and, you know, schools were talked about, of course, I have kids, you know, I mean, everybody wants safe conditions and driving conditions. So, you know, I, I too agree with the assessment that cars that are visiting the Costco site, they're not going to go south into the neighborhood because unless they're going to a destination or a home or they live there, it's not a shortcut. You know, it, it does take longer. You know, I go to Costco too, you know, most, there's probably many in this room that do, or Sam's, or whatever, whether it's Target, Walmart. I mean, we know how the arterial trips, you, you take the shortest route, the quickest route, and, you know, we believe that the situation set up on Emmett, well, yes, there would be an increase in traffic on Emmett Street. I do not think, and city staff does not believe, that that would have, you know, a major impact on the actual neighborhood. There were a few other items I just wanted to touch on. Was mentioned about the school districts. When we receive applications at the city for all types of developments, this entire zone, or Planning Board packet, we send out the materials to not only city departments for review, so parks, planning, public works, we also send them to our, our partners, Douglas County Engineers Office, we send them to school districts, you know, Elkhorn School Districts would receive this information. So we send it to about 25 different organizations and entities for potential comments that, that go in putting together for our report. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't think I have any other specific comments that, that I feel I need to make unless you have questions. So I will put together the staff, or mention the staff recommendation, approval of the rezoning from AG to MU, subject to submission of five acceptable mixed-use development agreements, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 15 conditions in the report.
Thank you. Before I ask for real call vote, just a comment, so thank you all for, for coming out here today. Understand, all of us understand your concerns. A lot of the questions that you've raised were raised in our pre-meeting as well, we talked about them in, in depth, we've read all of the correspondence as well. We do not take safety lightly. This board, as I've been on it, has, has always been concerned with, with public safety, and well, should be. So no matter how the vote is, I want you to know that we, we do take it seriously. And I think Costco's trying to do a good job of being good neighbors. I think the plan has been pretty well-developed. I do have some concerns on some of the same things that were raised as well, but I think that the way it's been presented is laid out pretty well. But we'll see. Traffic is always a problem in Omaha, isn't it? Everywhere you go, it's, it's a problem, it seems like, so. With that, I'll ask for a vote, please, or a motion, excuse me.
Motion for the approval of the rezoning from AG to MU, subject to submission of five acceptable final copies of the mixed-use develop agreement, approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the meeting the following 15 conditions.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Debbie, we record the vote, please.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Pro four to zero.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
So I do just want to point out, this is a preliminary plat which will go to City Council. A final plat would also have to come back later on to Planning Board and through City Council.
Yeah. Okay. No, we did that one, 23 is the last one here. So now I'm going to move on to the next item that we, we passed over originally there, but we're going to take it up now. It's item number 23 on the agenda, it's case number C10-22-250, C10-22-262. Applicant is McNeil and Company Builders LLC. The request is rezoning from R3 to R6 and R7 with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Overlay District. Location is northwest and southwest of 168th and Shirley Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today is, I believe, Kent Rasmussen, Pat McNeil, PJ McNeil, Kip Demig, all with McNeil and Company, and then also John Coolidge with Lampard Neers and the Consulting Engineers on this particular project. So we're all here to address any questions, concerns, and respond to any opposition. Again, this is both the northwest and southwest corner of 168th and Shirley Street in the Rose Garden Estates neighborhood. The proposal is to rezone the property on the south side of Shirley Street to R7 and the property on the north side to R6. Currently, everything is zoned R3, both to the west and to the east, and then immediately to the south is the mixed-use center to the south. And again, we're dealing with 168th and West Center Road, which is also 165-acre mixed-use center. Again, 165 acres goes to the half-mile in all directions. So interestingly, just a little bit of history about this property, it's still undeveloped, and I think it was zoned and replatted a little over 50 years ago. And I think it was zoned and replatted a little over 50 years ago. Pat McNeil bought this property about 20 years ago or 25 years ago. And one of the reasons why it hasn't been too developed to date is that 168th Street has always been called for to be improved between Pacific Street and West Center Road. And there would be no reason to have, you know, a multifamily project or development here with a major construction of an arterial street such as 168th Street, which I believe was under construction for probably two, close to two years. So it was a long, long time. And it's now, the project is 168th Street Improvement Project is done. And now, of course, this property is, is ripe for development. So in addition to the rezoning, I guess I'll keep the same orientation. There we go. The same orientation of the site. This shows the site plan. You've got 168th Street here running along the east. You've got Shirley Street running through the middle of the project. And of course, this is the R7 area. And this is the R6 area that's being proposed. We're also rezoning this or putting the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District on top of this as well, which kicks in the urban design code. So the design elements of the urban design code will apply to this particular project. The project itself is 194 multifamily units. And they're calling for about 47% of those units, or, or 92 units, if you will, will be one bedroom units. 52% or about 100 units will be two bedroom units. And then about 1% will be three bedroom units. And that's about two units. And I believe they're in the penthouse areas of the podium buildings. The average rental rates will be between $1,100 for a one bedroom, all the way up to $2,600 a month for the penthouse or the, the larger three bedroom units. So again, market rate apartments here and not affordable or, or low income housing. So then we break the site really into two different areas. You've got north of Shirley Street, and that contains 66 units in three buildings. And each one of these buildings is a 22-plex. And I've got some, you know, elevation drawings. It's kind of more of a 3D model. And it shows the relationship to the adjacent residential neighborhood as to how they will look. Because this, the residential neighborhood sits about 10 feet higher than the apartments. These buildings are three stories in height. They're about 38 feet to the midpoint of the roof as, which is the point of measurement on a pitched roof. And these will have a pitched roof, which will be more residential in feel and character. On this side, there'll be 26 garages and 73 surface parking stalls and 16 tandem stalls. And, and you'll see when I show you the elevations of the building, the tandem stalls are where a unit has a garage and then the driveway. So they'll essentially have two parking spaces per unit. On the south side of Shirley Street in this area, you have, we're showing a pool here and a pool house. There's not, it's not a clubhouse. And I've got some elevations of what the proposed or conceptual drawing will look like here. And then you've got three buildings. They will contain a total of 128 units. There is one 61-plex here in the corner. And that is a podium style building. It's four stories of apartments and then one story of underground parking. So it's a total of five stories. But again, the parking is underground, so you really won't see it. And then there is one 47-plex in this location here. And again, that's five stories in height as well, with four stories up and, and one story of underground parking underneath it on these, this building and this building here. And then we have one 20-plex shown here, which is also three stories in height, pitched roof, and about a 38-foot height to the midpoint of the pitched roof. In this particular location, there's about an eight-foot fall from the residential neighborhood to the apartment. So I've got some drawings there. On this side, again, the R7 side, we have 106 garages, 222 parking stalls shown. And there are two detention basins to detain all the water in accordance with the post-construction stormwater management requirements. There's a detention basin here and detention basin in this location here on the north side. This zoning request, as you note from the recommendation report, is consistent with the city's master plan. Because the, as I spoke about earlier, the intersection of 168th and Western Roads, 165 acre mixed use center. And with that intersection being 165 acre mixed use center, it allows for up to 500 units within or adjacent to the mixed use area, over and above what is allowed within a quarter mile of West Center Road. And so currently, there's about 200 units counted, which leaves about 300 units available at this mixed use corner. And of course, we're only proposing 194 units at this location between the north side of Shirley and the south side of Shirley. It meets all the site regulators. There's no waivers being sought here. Meets all the buffer yard requirements. With that, I, I think I'll show some of the actual elevations of the buildings and what they look like. Most of you are familiar with Pat McNeil and his company and the quality product, product, projects and products they build and put on the market. This, this is an elevation, I guess you would be looking southeast. You've got the, the pool house, the swimming pool, and then the two podium buildings, the other smaller 20-plex is shown here. This is that elevation. This would be on the north side of Shirley with the three-story buildings in this location. As you can see here, it's shown where the building, the residential houses sit about 10 feet higher. And so they really are looking down upon these particular buildings. And then, of course, those are the units to the south. And then I just have some other, just general elevations that I can share with you here. And it shows the, one of the podium buildings and the parking area. Again, this is one of the three-story units here shown with the materials that are being proposed. Here is another one. And again, you're seeing the garages and the parking areas in front. And I have some more, but they're really the same depictions. But in any event, we had a neighborhood meeting on August 1st. There was approximately 45 to 50 people that were present. And there was probably more concerns about traffic, I think, on Shirley Street and how people were going to access and if there was going to be a signal at the Shirley Street intersection with 168th Street. I, I don't think that the traffic study will support that. I think it's been studied at least two times, and the warrants were never met. And, you know, multifamily housing really is not a high AM, PM peak traffic generator because people leave at all times throughout the day. And so not everyone's leaving in the AM and not everyone's coming home in the PM. So I don't think you're going to see, you know, with 194 units, a high volume of, of traffic and congestion on Shirley Street at 168th Street. So we have reviewed the recommendation report. We find the same acceptable. I did want to point out that the, there is, the, the site's pretty challenging. It, it falls pretty significantly. There's a pretty significant retaining wall on the north side of Shirley Street. And, and on the south side, it really, it falls into a wetland and, and kind of a drainage area that you see here. So, and then, then it comes back up in grade. So it's a fairly challenging site. And you can see it's fairly irregular in shape. But we think this is a, a great project for this particular area and, and the property. And there is a US Army Corps of Engineer 404 permit that's currently in place. So this project won't be held up by that. And so we've reviewed the recommendation report, find the same acceptable. We're here to answer any questions and respond to any opposition that may be here today.
Do you have a question on?
Sure.
You say there's a pool house, but is there no clubhouse?
No clubhouse. There's not really enough.
How is it going to be managed and, and how are the units going to be rented? Come, come on.
Yeah, yeah, there's a leasing facility management office in the podium building. And so there'll be a onsite manager at all times. And so they'll maintain the pool area. They'll maintain, maintain the pool house and they'll, of course, maintain the parking areas and, and green spaces and the units themselves. So, yes.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Okay, see none? How many are going to testify in opposition? Just testify. All right. Again, just to, just reiterate, appreciate it very much. And, and we want to hear from you. But if there's repetitive testimony, please keep it brief. We've seen the, the public correspondence. But so if you're in opposition, I'll call you up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Matukiewicz and Hattie Miller, appearing on behalf of the Rose Garden Estates Homeowners Association. All right. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I'm first going to present a little background information, master plan information. Then we have an interview with Doug Gibson via Zoom. It's pre-recorded regarding some site concerns here. And I'll try to make this all as quick as possible. So again, I represent Rose Garden Estates. It's 261 single-family homes. It is located west of 168th and Shirley Street, really between the, the major corridors, R Center and Pacific Street. Here's the site Mr. Jobim just shared with us. Again, surrounded by residential from the Rose Garden Estates. This is developed, the covenants were filed in about late 1978, developed through the 80s. Mature neighborhood. Mr. Jobim's rendering and McNeil's rendering. Now, the planning considerations that this board and the planning department should consider with respect to this plan does not carry out the goals and objectives of the city plan. It does not satisfy the required legal documents that are supposed to be the basis of the city plan, as well as Nebraska Revised Statute 144-03, which is the underlying zoning regulation statute. And what consideration should be made in zoning and zoning changes, as well as an old 1950 case, which is still good law, Davis versus City of Omaha, in which the, the planning board, the city council actually later on, did not consider these underlying objectives when making a zoning change, and the Supreme Court shot it down. This particular development does adversely affect this neighborhood by exacerbating existing traffic congestion. It endangers public safety with the additional traffic, results in an undue concentration of people and cars in one area, 194 new units on 8.8 acres approximately. It strains existing infrastructure and reduces the value of neighboring homes. Now, this planning board and I challenge the planning department, we can certainly look at the master plan and the numbers and crunch the numbers from an engineering perspective and say, we can make this development fit. But I here, I ask you, it shouldn't be, can we make it fit, which is an objective standard. We should look at what is the best use of the property that provides the best quality of life for our neighbors, our families, our general community, and the city. So again, I challenge you, these are the underlying objectives of zoning, these subjective challenges, not just the mathematics and the engineering involved. Now, with respect to this zoning change, as I suggested, it does not carry out the concept elements and goals of the master plan. Now, in the master plan, again, I, I thank Mr. England. He's explained how the numbers seem to fit with this particular development. However, I challenge the, this planning board to consider the zoning out the elements in the master plan, these subjective elements. First, the future land use map shows this when you, a layman looks at the map as a low-use area. Thus, homeowners should be allowed to rely on the master plan and the future land use map. I ask again, I repeat these legal justifications or the legal guidelines, that there is no justification for this particular development. Here's just a quick view of the master plan. The red box with the yellow inside shows that this area is, is zoned for the long term as low-density residential. That's why we're here today, because they're requesting a change. As I've mentioned, there are certain elements within the master plan that I'd ask you to consider. The first is in the concept element of vision. The master plan provides, there is a typo. It says Omahans need, take, need to take pride in the physical attractiveness of their city and work to eliminate visual blight and to promote high-quality design. Omaha's urban forum must carefully be designed to eliminate land use conflicts, reduce traffic, not increase it, congestion, encourage pedestrian movement, movement, and incorporate open space. I'd suggest you that this plan does none of those. Further in the concept element, with respect to infrastructure and public service and transportation, the master plan provides, the city should avoid changes in land use that would generate traffic in excess of the design capacity of surrounding streets. Here, I'd mentioned, they did just widen 168th Street between Pacific and Center. However, it's my understanding from speaking to Ryan Haas at Public Works, that two planned traffic studies are, are ordered but have not been completed to date, and certainly haven't been considered in this plan. Lastly, in the master plan, under the urban development section, goals and concepts, it provides the City of Omaha will ensure that all areas of the city are served by adequate, well-maintained infrastructure and public services. Services and facilities will serve both existing and anticipated development in an efficient, equitable, and cost-effective manner. And I don't believe that has been considered in this plan. Now, this particular zoning change does not satisfy the legal considerations that I mentioned. Now, as the statute I mentioned earlier, as well as the Davis case. And here's what it said zoning changes have to comply with. Number one, they have to lessen congestion in the streets. B, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. Mr. Gibson gets into a little bit about fire issues with this plan. C, promote health and general welfare. D, provide adequate light and air. E, prevent overcrowding of land. F, secure safety from flood. G, avoid undue consideration of population. H, facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other, other public requirements. And lastly, I, promote convenience of access. Again, that's taken from Nebraska Revised Statutes 14-403 and the Davis case from 1950. Now, this particular, I, I guess I'd also add, in the rezoning application form, this used to be a paper form. You can find it on the website for the planning department now. It takes those same considerations. I'd divert your attention to the middle highlight. The, the planning department is going to look at the proposed change, will it allow for an appropriate use of land which will not adversely affect the neighborhood by causing congestion, those things I just talked about endangering public safety, causing undue concentration of people, impeding, impeding the use of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other public facilities, or reducing the value of buildings. So all of those things should be taken into account, although they're often not talked about in recommendation reports or in planning board meetings. This plan again involves 194 proposed apartment units. That includes 102 with two or more bedrooms, 342 parking stalls, and a large swimming pool on 8.8 acres. The Rose Garden Estates suggests to you that this is not an appropriate use of this land, as it's going to strain existing physical infrastructure and public services, including water, sewer, the schools, which I'll highlight here in a moment, as well as proposes no new parks and doesn't address public safety. This does add undue concentration of people on a relatively small site of 8.8 acres. It creates visual blight, one of those considerations. It increases traffic along an already crowded 168th Street corridor. There's no new entry into this area. The same entry is going to serve these apartments as serve the Rose Garden Estates and its 261 homes. It does not encourage pedestrian movement in any fashion. I, I don't see, maybe Mr. Jobim could address on the pool, how are the people from the opposite side of Shirley Street to get to the pool? I'd suggest this may start causing undue concentration or parking along Shirley Street to serve not only 261 homes, but now 194 apartments. Lastly, this plan actually eliminates open space that's there now and has been there for many years, adding more buildings to the land. This high-density housing will adversely affect the neighborhood. Again, the primary access, as I just mentioned, is 168th and Shirley Streets. It's crowded. It's heavily congested. There's no traffic light to control traffic to and from that. And that's a way that I actually take home from work. It's crowded. It's hard to get into. They, they need a light there. A light should be considered before 194 users, or units are added, not after, and after there's an accident. The plan invites additional parking, parking for the swimming pool on Shirley Street. I'll show you a map here in a second because there's no parking, it seems to be allotted for the swimming pool. for the swimming pool, and certainly people being as they are, they're not going to all want to walk to the pool, especially those across the street. Now, some of the schools that feed this area are already at or over capacity, and these are two schools we talked to that said they feed from this area, and one is Elkhorn Ridge Middle School, that is already at 500-plus students, which is about its capacity. Spring Ridge Elementary School is over capacity, 552 students. Now, in this area, within a two-mile radius, we already have six apartment complexes offering 1,110 units, and as I looked at each of the six, at least online, currently they have vacancies, so they're not actually at full capacity. One of these units, apartments is not opened yet among my units here, and that's Live 178 at 178th and Pacific, and that's one that I've visited you on in the recent past, where 96 new units are going to be placed at about 178th off of Pacific. Mr. Jobim did mention that there was one meeting with the McNeil Group, about 50, as I understood attend, I was not at that meeting. That's been the only dialogue that I'm aware of, and I know the residents would certainly appreciate at least a dialogue to address their concerns and maybe offer some suggestion in the development if it's, again, viable. Now, I mentioned Spring Ridge Elementary, which is over capacity. This, if you go to their website today, is still on it for 2022, 2023 registration. They're actually encouraging people moving into subdivisions within this district to go to Elkhorn, to go elsewhere, because they're over capacity. They don't specifically mention Rose Garden Estates in this, they're mentioning all the ones at the western edge of the district that feeds this school, but they're actually encouraging students to go elsewhere because they're over capacity already. I think that number I showed you a minute ago was at 552, which we just learned directly from the school. And when I mentioned Spring, that school, and the Live 178 apartments, ours is the yellow, the new one we're talking about here today, McNeil, the purple is Spring Ridge, which 94 units was just approved on a much smaller parcel. Adverse impact on the neighborhood. Again, 194 units on 8.8 acres is too dense, it's really at maximum capacity. Engineers often use a rule of thumb of 21.2 units per acre for multifamily housing, this is right at that maximum. We ask that that dense of a development not be approved. I've mentioned twice now, the planned pool along Shirley Street invites parking on Shirley Street. There has, that we're aware of, been no investigations or studies regarding increase of traffic, although two traffic studies have been ordered on how the impact will be on stormwater management, stormwater runoff, runoff treatment, or the effect on the existing sanitary sewer system. And again, here's where the pool is, the side that would be on the north side, I believe, again, I think people are going to park along Shirley, you're going to have 261 homes fed off of 168th and Shirley, as well as these apartments with cars along Shirley, certainly not a desirable effect, and again, no light at 168th and Shirley. Now, this intersection is one of the 50, the 168th and Center, excuse me, intersection is one of the 50 busiest intersections in Douglas County, according to the metro area traffic reports. From the 2016 and 2018 reports, those are the most recent I could find available, I don't know if there was a pause, they usually do them every two years, so there would have been one in 20, but I have not been able to locate that, but this intersection is number 12, as far as the busiest intersections in Omaha at 168th and West Center Road, which feeds this. This is not Omaha, and what I'm asking you today is that we don't make this Omaha. If you're familiar, this is Denver, this is I-25. Getting anywhere in Denver, I don't care what time of day you go, that's what it looks like. Your five-minute drive is 45 to an hour and a half wherever you want to go. Omaha's a special place. People come here to the College World Series, they come here, and they notice it's an easy place to get around, we have friendly people, and it's just a great community. Let's avoid this. This is more of an arterial street in Denver also. I use Denver just because I don't think they've done the planning. When you look at Denver, every corner is new multifamily housing, and this has been the result. So the Rose Garden Estates Homeowners Association respectfully request that the board deny the application, or at a minimum table this application until we can get these two traffic studies further see the impact of this type of development in this area, and I'd suggest to you, this is just the wrong development at the wrong time. Mentioned to you, I had Mr. Gibson.
Sir, my name is Brian Nolan. We've discussed this matter involving the McNeil and Company proposal on at least two.
So I provided a letter last week, as far as members of the neighborhood. He's an architect, he's licensed in Nebraska, and he's a former city planner, he was a city planner in Boise, he gets into his background and just gives some opinions. It lasts about eight minutes.
He belongs to one of the homes there.
He what?
He is the father-in-law of one of the homeowners.
Okay.
Just so you know, he does belong to the neighborhood.
Hold on a second. Are we allowed to video testimony? Legal?
I mean, I've seen it before.
He would have flown in, how do you know?
Is it a pre-recorded?
It is, this last Friday, I believe.
Then it's the equivalent, I guess, of written testimony that's being recorded, he's not interacting with the board. We do need to have a name and address and contact information.
That's all been provided, actually, in fact, Hattie Miller has right here. I have a few things for you. I have a petition by the owners within Rose Garden Estates, signed by 261 people in opposition to the development. My letter dated September 2nd, provided to you on Friday. Mr. Gibson's background information, CV, and letter, which has been provided, and as well as a copy of my PowerPoint. Last Thursday, I believe, I think he says the date, last Thursday or Friday.
Okay. Let's go ahead and play it then.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Occasions, I believe, is that right?
That is correct.
And I'd ask you if you could identify yourself for the, for those that are viewing this presentation.
My name is Douglas L. Gibson. I'm a licensed architect in the state of Nebraska and approximately 20 other states and jurisdictions throughout the western and midwestern United States. I'm also an NCARB certified registered architect.
And do I understand correctly, sir, you have also served as a community planner of some type in the past?
Yes, for five years, I was a planning commissioner for the city of Boise. I was empaneled by the mayor, Beeter, at the time, and served for five years, and then voluntarily left my position to continue my professional pursuits due to the amount of time necessary to do that planning commission position.
And sir, what is your understanding of why you had been brought into this matter?
I was contacted by concerned residents who had property within the Rose Garden subdivision and had been in receipt of a, I guess, preliminary site plan that was handed around by other concerned residents in the subdivision, and was asked to review it and provide some initial assessments, and then I was contacted for some additional input on the project.
Have you reviewed any materials relating to this project?
Yes, I have. Most recent document, I believe it's drawn revision, I'll call it Delta 2, dated August 5th, 2022, by the McNeil Company. In addition, I've also reviewed the zoning application, as it's been provided to me by the concerned citizens of the Rose Garden subdivision.
As a result of this review, have you any concerns about the proposed development by McNeil and Company?
Yeah, and for context, over the last 20 years, I've developed over 115 different multifamily projects throughout the western United States, almost $1.3 billion in construction. So I can't call myself an expert, but I'm fairly well-grounded on comprehensive land use policy, building code, and what it takes to get a project of this size, and I've done projects in excess of 200 units, so I understand high density as well as suburban and rural developments. My primary concern was just that because of the upzoning request, it's resulting in a density that is significantly higher than what one would anticipate as a development in this area, specifically the number of units, and just specifically a lot of different site planning issues. I could go on, I mean, it's my letter, but the primary issues really are, you know, massing, configuration of parking, and then specifically some critical fire management, design flaws and issues, particularly on the north property. My main concern as a licensed design professional is making sure that fire apparatus and fire staff can get in and work an active fire situation, and the way the site plan is designed, I just don't see that as a particularly efficient nor approvable design, and in none of the documents that I reviewed, was I able to determine or ascertain whether or not Omaha Fire Department has actually been part or a participant in any of the design review process. So I think that's a specific red light, if you will, on my issue, specific to fire management, design flaws. You've got four-story structures, three-story structures, you don't have universal access around them, you've got pinch points where deployment of ladders would be difficult, if not almost impossible, and I just don't feel that the draftsman that put together the site plan really is knowledgeable in turning radius and movement of large fire equipment, and I don't understand how that document could be submitted to the city for approval if it hasn't been vetted. The third item that really caught my attention is just the stormwater design and management, some of the language that they're using for riparian areas, you know, intermittent waterways, ephemeral waterways, these trigger a lot of, you know, US Army Corps of Engineer, whether it's a 404 or a 401 jurisdictional delineation, and I work with these all the time, and in none of these documents is it proven out that the design is even acceptable to the Corps of Engineers. So there's the possibility that the site could be designed, permitted, and done for a rezone, and wouldn't be acceptable to the jurisdictional authorities that have control over the waterways, and specifically the opportunity for the developer to call a waterway an amenity and not have any onsite tot lots or play amenities for children. I find that particularly concerning, and in most instances, you would have to underground a culvert or a riparian riverway of this size, but I don't see sufficient standoff distance either for safety or for preventing any water during construction to make it into the Papio Creek, Papillion Creek, and then on into the Missouri River. And I just don't see anywhere in the application package where that's been addressed sufficiently. I wouldn't submit a project like this knowing full well that there would be particularly unsolvable design issues at this point, and that would be really my main concern. So those are the three things, upzoning, resulting in an unacceptable density, critical fire management, design flaws, I'll call that, and then really just the stormwater design and delineational language that they use in an attempt to draw attention away from the fact that they're building right on top of a riparian area, and they haven't proved out that the stormwater detention or retention facilities they've noted would even percolate, that they wouldn't become stormwater ponds and not necessarily an area to process appropriately any onsite stormwater.
Sir, if I may, with regard to the density issue, would that also extend or have implications for traffic patterns?
Yeah, I haven't seen a traffic study, and one of my main concerns is, I'll call it the T-intersection, where both the north and the south parcels dump onto Shirley Street. One of my main concerns, besides the traffic impact on both east and westbound Shirley, the 168th isn't complete, and so we really can't get a true assessment of what traffic patterns would be in that area, and I just don't see sufficient backup and turning distance for residents coming out of either the north or the south parcel, particularly during high-traffic use periods in the morning and late afternoon. I mean, there's a possibility of people queuing up on 168th southbound, trying to get onto Shirley to then get into the north of the south parcel. Unless that's vetted out appropriately, you're really just asking for long-term traffic issues at that intersection. I don't see anything where the developer is proposing signalization of that intersection, and based upon, you know, 200 families and approximately 340-plus cars, there's the opportunity for a significant impact, not only to the adjacent grid through the subdivision as people go westbound on Shirley, but also just in that general location, and I think that's one of the things that upzoning results in, is this exacerbation of an already marginal traffic situation.
Sir, the opinions you've expressed here today, are these ones you hold to a reasonable degree of professional certainty?
Yes, I do, and I've drafted the letter, I've submitted it to planning, I've certified it as a licensed design professional under the statutes of the state of Nebraska, and so yes, you can take them as my professional opinions based upon my basis of knowledge.
And the opinions you have expressed are within the areas of your expertise, are they not?
That is correct, yes. I would not be making those statements without that.
Sir, I want to thank you today or for your time today.
Thank you.
So before you go any further with this, so we normally don't allow video testimony, doesn't give us a chance to interact with the person, courtesy out of, for your guests that are here as well, so just understand that. Do want to know who was asking the questions, though, so would you enter that information into the record for us?
Yes, sir, his name is Brian Nolan. He is an attorney in town and a resident within the Rose Garden Estates. Someone provide his address on that surface.
1823 South 169th Circle in Rose Garden Estates.
Brian D. Nolan.
Okay. And the gentleman that was answering the questions there?
Douglas Gibson.
Is he an Omaha resident?
He is not an Omaha resident, he is currently an Idaho resident, he is a licensed Nebraska architect and has done some work in Nebraska.
And why did you seek him out, just out of curiosity?
I personally did not, the residents found him.
Okay, all right, thanks.
He's just asked to review it because he was a city planner in Boise for five years and works in multifamily development.
The only thing I'll say is if you were holding on this since Thursday, you probably should have just emailed this to us, so we could have looked at it ahead of time rather than sit here and watch it.
I did provide his report last Thursday or Friday, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, are there, who else is going to testify in opposition? Again, just a show of hands. Okay, just a few of you have, so, hold on, hold on a second. Okay, come on up. Enter name and address for record.
I think there's six of us from the neighborhood.
Total, okay.
My name's Keilia Gavara. I live at 100, I'm sorry, 1807 South 169th Circle. So let me show you on the map where that is. So this is my home here, which as you can see on the rendering would now butt up to a parking lot, and then this is a large trash receptacle. So, you know, we don't live on an aerial view, so I wanted to show some pictures of what that's going to look like for my wife and my kids' lives, and I apologize because I just have it on my phone, I didn't print it. Let me switch the view. So if you can see, this is the view out of our bedroom window, and where, what?
Can you flip it? The other way.
Thanks, team, thank you. Okay, how's that?
There you go.
Yeah, that's better, isn't it? Okay, so we have a walkout patio, and when I, after the meeting on the first, came home and measured our lot, there's only a 30-foot buffer before the construction starts, so literally where that tree and our little reading bench is at, is where the parking lot would be. So that's right outside our bedroom window. This is standing down. This is standing at that tree and looking up at our house. So you can see that anyone has full view now of my kids' bedroom windows, of our bedroom walkout, and I know that Mr. Jobin mentioned height differential, but I, there's no structures that have been in place, they've spoken about doing shrubbery. They've spoken about doing shrubbery to cut down on the the lights of cars coming in and out of the parking lot. But that's really the only kind of distance that would be happening. So I want to speak to you as a mom. We're expecting this baby in November. Open access to a parking lot. I have an 11-year-old and an eight-year-old. And right now, they run through this space all the time to their friends' homes, who are just on the other side of what the parking lot would be. And so the increased risk of my kids and our neighbors' kids getting hurt by vehicles, I don't know who's going to live in these apartments. You know, we have, and my neighbor Chris is going to speak a little bit more about the relationship that we have back here and the way that we use this space. But I know them. If their kid gets on my trampoline, I know who to call if they get hurt. And I'm not going to know that for these apartments. And the proximity, the very, very real, very close proximity to our windows, to our doors, to the place that we spend so much time, the impact of this rezoning is going to change, fundamentally change, the way that we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other opponents?
Yep.
Come on up. And if you're going to, if you wouldn't mind, if you wouldn't just, who's ever going to speak, maybe just fill in these seats here. That way I kind of know who to call up. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Goldie, and my husband and I, my husband Jim and I reside at 16823 Pine Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68130. We have lived there since 1988, 34 years. When we purchased this home, it was footnoted in the covenants and expressed by our realtor, that lot 262, which is where the green area is here, that may be conveyed or dedicated by the owner thereof for recreational purposes such as a park. During these years, we have maintained all the property behind our home. Our home is the third one over here. And we have maintained this property, and our neighbors have also helped with maintaining this property. And this property is known as Lot 262. This space was nothing but weeds and mulberry trees and ash trees. My husband Jim and I have seeded grass, done weed control, fertilized, and mowed this parcel for all these years. Never once has anyone from any of the previous people that owned that property or the current come in there to do any maintenance. In these 34 years, we have been the only caretakers of this piece of land. We have constructed a fence past our property as we saw it was ours. Never once has anyone else besides us come into this area to mow, nor have they performed any tree maintenance. No one has removed dead branches that have fallen. And in fact, in the snowstorm of October 24th and 25th of 1997, multiple large limbs came down from a maple tree in that area. And my husband Jim and I cleared that area, those scattered branches. A couple of years later, we paid for the remainder of that maple tree to be removed, which was quite expensive. A few years after removing the maple tree, we planted an oak and a lindenwood in that vicinity. Unfortunately, the lindenwood was struck by lightning, and so we recently had to remove that as well. We paid for the removal of a dying ash tree that was also in that area on 262. About 15 years ago, we planted a large vegetable garden that is fenced in. We have invested a lot of time and energy to maintain and improve this parcel of land, and we believe it belongs to us. Now, the developer wants to build an apartment complex in our backyard so that when we look out our windows, instead of seeing this natural wooded area, we will be blessed with a three-story tall building, 73 concrete parking spaces, and a commercial dumpster filled with trash waiting to be picked up. The large dumpster is to be placed adjacent to our property, less than 60 feet away, which will bring numerous problems such as stench, creation of food habitat for rats, raccoons, and other vermin. Emptying the dumpster will create acoustic pollution, depriving us and our neighbors of reasonable peaceful use of our property. This project will destroy the quality of life for adjacent residents and will negatively affect the value of our home. Please be judicious when making your decision and take into consideration that this is a residential neighborhood and should remain zoned R3. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Tasha Newell, 1803 South 169th Circle. I live right here, the end of the little parking lot raceway here. I will be a defect, sorry, I'm very nervous. I will be directly affected by the proposed McNeil development in our neighborhood. Today, as it stands, I live in a beautiful neighborhood with 100-plus-year-old trees and wildlife. Sorry, Carol got me a little emotional also. Wildlife include, but not limited to deer, turkey, fox, opossum, squirrels, birds, bats, hawks, raccoons, and even the newly endangered monarch butterflies. This area needs to be preserved. It seems people can't leave any area untouched anymore. It's a beautiful thing to let your children play in a safe, open space. Our land in the backyard provides a shady, fun-filled activity space for both our children and for us. We have karaoke nights. We have fire pits. It's a really wonderful community spot for us. This project that they're proposing is so different from building than other sites, simply because it's being built in a style that feels like an invasion, both in our space and our privacy. It will be so much more than just an inconvenience to us. The tree-shaded land we plan will be turned into a hot concrete parking lot with dumpsters and moving traffic. I have an 11-year-old and a two-year-old. My two-year-old is autistic and comes alive outside. I'm sorry. It's a space where she can roam, where I'm not pulling her out of the street and getting her into safety. This is a place that she roams. She gets the community contact, which is really good for her social life as well. The three-and-a-half to four-and-a-half-story buildings will tower over our homes. This picture here. Well, this is about the zoning anyway. This picture here shows 30 feet from their property line. This is here on the this is this home here. No, this home here. This is 30 feet from their property line. That's where a three-and-a-half-story building will be standing. Additionally, the north lot has a street address of Pine Street. And I'm not sure I understand spot zoning all the way. I did look up the definition, and it says it is the process of singling out a small parcel of land for a used classification totally different from that of a surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of other owners. And I couldn't have said that any better myself. This is the space between the homes that, on the north lot, where that lot starts. That's where, that's what would be rezoning. Our neighborhood has been established for over 40 years, and this project does feel invasive and unnecessary. I truly believe and venture to say that if it was proposed in your backyards, it would be declined. I'd like to keep with our covenants and leave this space a single-family development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I get the pleasure of going next. I am actually, pardon me. My name is Chris Moulton, M-O-U-L-T-O-N. My address is 16835 Pine Street. Mr. Chairman, lady and gentlemen of the board, I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. I respect the fact that you'd like us to keep our comments short, but I'm also passionate about this, so I ask for your grace. I'd like to make two points relating to this rezoning request. One is about acoustic impact. The second, dealing with the trash dumpsters that Carol already mentioned. And two is the negative impact on my community. First, the acoustic impact are simply sound. Specifically, the dumpster right there. When the trash truck empties that dumpster, it creates between 70 and 80 decibels of sound. And then what does that trash truck do? It backs up. We're all familiar with that backup safety signal. That generates 100 decibels of sound intensity. With that sound intensity in mind, I'd like you to keep in mind, keep that in mind and look at this map and reference that the distance to the nearest apartment building is roughly twice what it is to three of my closest neighbors. That is unacceptable. My second point has to do with my community. As part of my preparation for today, I watched videos of the previous Omaha Planning Board meetings. The meeting in January this year included a project along the 24th Street, North Omaha. I was very interested in this. The Planning Board commended project leaders for their engagement of the community. There was positive public comment from several residents as well as business owners. This struck me as the right thing to do when things work. And you, the Planning Board, approved that project. Now, these are my neighbors. That's my community. In the eight years my family has lived here, we've become part of that community. I know these people. I know every single one of their names. I know their spouses. I know their kids. I send my kids to their houses so that my kids can play with their kids. I've even attended a wedding. And I've attended two funerals in that eight years. All with my neighbors in my community. Now, this green space here is being covered by this parking lot, proposed parking lot, is a vital component of that community. I would point out, you'd see in Tasha's pictures there, there is not one single fence built by one neighbor. It is an open green space. We can engage across that space, as the ladies mentioned. I can make a casual wave or acknowledgement of one of my neighbors, have a lively conversation around a fire pit, or I can shout out to Ryan from my back deck. There's one thing that COVID has taught me, is that human connection matters. Not phone calls, not social media, but in-person, face-to-face contact. The proposed apartment parking area is here disrupts my community and that human connection. If that parking area is removed, it's my understanding that this site plan will not meet the R6 zoning requirements. Therefore, I put to you that this project, as proposed, is disruptive and detrimental to my community. Unlike the proposal on 24th Street in North Omaha, it is not supported by our community. So therefore, I do not think it is the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. If you would, if we, we know that you're passionate about this. If you, just to be fair, let's just keep the applause to ourselves, if you would please. Thank you.
I'm Christine Coons. I live at 16811 Pine Street, Nebraska, 68130. I have to identify myself first for the speech. But does here anybody really care about who I am? I'm nobody, just like many other Rose Garden residents who are here today. That's how we feel. We live in one of the Elkhorn's densest, oldest subdivision among many others with open lots and golf courses. Why are the apartments being squeezed in my neighborhood where they will barely fit? Because we are nobody. We are the easy target to pick on. Many Rose Garden residents are seniors, as you can tell. They bought their houses decades ago and raised their family and looking forward to a peaceful, retired years to come. And this generation, they worked so hard to pay their taxes and build the country and lay the foundation so you and I can have a life we have now and continue to grow. And is this how we treat them? It would be a crime to repay them with traffic and congestion like in New York City. Growing up in the communist country, I have seen many cases where the government used the name master plan to authorize the builder to pull people out of their home during their sleep and demolish everything they owned into dust. I'm sorry, I get a little bit of emotion when I'm talking about my past. So people lived like ants in the way of a nonstop master plan train. Ironically, today, I must fight for such human rights in America. For two years of detouring traffic from widening 168th Street flying through my neighborhood, my kids were trapped inside the house. All of us struggled, pulled out our driveway. Finally, the road is open. Our lives are back to normal, where kids are being kids, playing outside with friends again. So if departments add so much traffic to the neighborhood, does that mean I have to put my kids back inside the house till they are 18? Or they're going to get a run over? McNeil has never cared or maintained this land. Just like today, he's on the phone all the time, doesn't care a single word we say. We mowed the grass. Okay, I point out where we mowed the grass. We were mowing the, almost the whole lot here so the mosquito won't be the size of the jet. We inspect and clean out the dead wood so no children get crushed because this is open field. Anybody can go there. And this is only green space in such a dense neighborhood. If you look around, we are the only neighborhood that don't have a playground or park. I seen a teenager sitting there for hours every day during pandemic. I'm sure it helped him coping with the stress and the fear. I'm sorry. I'm so nervous.
It's okay.
I have seen many wildlife, even endangered species, like my neighbor said, back there, following through the stream and trying to survive and migrating through such a busy city. This sanity is what we need, especially after catastrophic virus wall we've all been through. I'm shaking so bad. Oh, I messed up. Okay. I guess, I guess with money and the power, anything can be built anywhere. But it makes people losing their hopes, losing the morality to do the right thing, losing the trust they have in our government, which is supposed to serve people. By end of the day, everybody walk out of the room. We all just a regular family person, a father, a son, a mother, a daughter. We all have to be human first before any plan. And our rights shouldn't be diminished by the subjective interpretation of the master plan. Well, I was prepared for five-minute speech, but you are telling me for, I can speak for 10 minutes. So I'm going to speak a little bit longer. Hope that helps. You know, like you said after the call. You know, like, like you said after the Costco case, you said, I understand your concern. If you don't live in my neighborhood, you don't, you don't, you are not my neighbor, I don't think you really understand. I work at downtown. I have to work the whole day and fighting the traffic and drive back, which I face another downtown life there if all those traffic adds to my neighborhood. And Mr. Jobin, did I say that right? You mentioned in the Costco case, looks like the majority concern is only the traffic. Well, guess who's driving those cars? People. Your traffic has a problem, somebody's gonna pay for this, you know? I, nobody want to happen to your, your family. It has been a long day, everybody's tired, I can tell. You cannot wait to, to let this over and, you know, make your decision and go to home. But what if you don't see the one you loved anymore because of bad traffic, somebody purposely put in there? You know, we don't have to do this. Omaha is not an island. We're in Nebraska. We're not out of land. Why, I understand master plan is supposed to, you know, make our city better, better economy. And I don't oppose expanding the city. But we don't have to, like, make our existing life miserable because the master plan. I don't think anybody who benefited this besides Mr. McNeil. And for Mr. McNeil, I mean, I heard you are a very successful company. I'm sure you made a lot of money. Maybe it's time to do some charity and pay back to the society.
Let's stick to the, let's stick to just the case, not to Mr. McNeil.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
It's about my everyday life. I get very.
I understand, you know.
I, I'm, I'm from a communist country. I, I'm an immigrant, as you can tell from my accent. I try to stay away from government because when an individual against the government, I'm not gonna win, you know? So I try to stay away from this, but this had to put me in, in a situation like this. So I, sorry, I'm a little bit emotional and not following the rules. So I would like a park there if he, if can, something can happen, donate the city or something, you can have a park there and protect the wildlife, the children, the life of all those seniors. You know, I don't mind that you put a statue there, maybe, you know, I think that's a good thing to do. And, well, thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anybody else?
One short one here. My name's Charles Wise. I'm on the other side of Hundred-and-sixty-seventh, or Hundred-and-sixty-eighth. I'm at one-sixty-seven, hang on, eighteen-twelve South Hundred-and-sixty-seventh Avenue Circle. And this is what I see when I look from my back deck. This is what I've seen since the young lady over there. We've, we've also moved in here in nineteen-eighty-eight. And this is what I've seen. And now I get to see the back of the fence, but that's okay. This kind of follows up with the previous speaker. You know, we need more green spaces. This, this has been like this as long as we've been here. There was an attempt at one point, twenty, twenty-five years ago, to do this very same thing. And it didn't happen. And you see here is the nice little creek, has just a little bit of water running down through there, except when it rains hard. And we see there deer, fox, all sorts of animals. And, and the hawks and the owls are there. Over here is where all my friends, my new friends, live and who have been here. So this is another picture. This is kind of rough. But this is also what I see now. This is what I'll see then. That's as close as I could come based on what I, little bit of information. But they said this was, these buildings over here were gonna be about fifty-some feet tall. I happen to know this tree here is only about thirty feet tall, maybe thirty-five at the most. I've walked under it a lot of times. And that's gonna be my, my view if this goes forward. I'll have all sorts of people looking out windows, looking at our backyard, looking at our bedroom windows up there. It's, it's not the neighborhood that we all know and love. So I agree. I, I think the city should consum, should, should pay a good price for what it's worth and make it a green space. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you for listening to what our neighborhood and what our community has to say. My name is Benjamin Kitter. I live at one-eight-one-five South Hundred-and-sixty-ninth Circle. I understand that everybody has a great case. For me, I served six years in the United States Army. Did two tours in Afghanistan, one of them in which I was wounded during special operations. I did not move to Omaha, and I did not move to the house I did for there to be an apartment, to be placed right behind it. We moved with the intentions of privacy. The land was zoned for R three, which is acceptable. I believe that it's okay to have single-family residences put there. I am not worried about that. What I'm worried about is that we have a community of people who take care of each other and love each other. However, with an introduction of sixty-six units placed behind our house, that community is not there. There are gonna be transient people going in and out, living there for maybe a year at a time, two years at a time, not significantly enough to establish and maintain the community that we have developed. I suffer from PTSD. It's a private health matter that I do not like sharing with most people. As a matter of fact, most of my neighbors have never known about the wound that I sustained in Afghanistan. It's very private to me. And that's why I moved into this house, this home I'm raising my family in, for the privacy that it provided for me and my family. Please leave it at R three. Adding all of these new strangers into our community is not doing us a favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is McCade Clements. I live at one-six-eight-two-nine Pine Street, which is the second house here, next to Chris and Carol. And I am perhaps the newest resident of the neighborhood. I bought the house in July of twenty, or July of this year, July fifteenth is when we closed on the house. And one of the biggest draws for us was the community. We were able to meet with a lot of these people and get to know them and fell in love with it immediately. We have three small children that we were very excited to be able to have this open green space behind our house to share with our neighbors and to feel like there is a safe and communal space there. And had we known that this was going to be happening, which we didn't until the first of August, when there was this, this announcement, we, we probably would not have decided to move into this neighborhood. And so I, I think that that's a very important aspect to consider in that you are, by approving this, you would be destroying a community that already is established and very strong and very Nebraskan. You know, these, these Omaha residents that have lived here and loved this space for as long as could be. And you would be eliminating the possibility for people who are coming from outside of this, this space. I'm coming from Arkansas. And for me to come here and to immediately feel engaged and loved by the community is something that is immeasurable in value. And so it, it's something that would be totally lost by this development. And, and I just want to thank you for your time today. It's been a long afternoon. And we're, we're all very glad that we get to come in at least, present these things to you.
Thank you, McCade. Please come forward.
My name is Zach Sedaris. We reside at one-seven-zero-zero-three Shirley Street. Right here. My wife and I moved in in nineteen ninety-four, we were told. Be a city park, which obviously was an attractive feature for us. I have the distinction of having a swimming pool. Thirty feet from my fence would be a three-story building, higher than the level of my ground. So if this is my backyard, the first story will be higher than my backyard. The developer must be required to provide a comprehensive shadow study for the entire development and shall be required to show true building shadows cast on all adjacent and continuous properties at the winter solace or December twenty-first of the year. Any shadows on addition properties must be justified and compensated for. Somebody got to pay me for the loss of the value of my real, of my property. Particularly for the property at one-seven-zero-three Shirley Street, which is an existing pool, which may not be usable during late summer or early fall because of the shadowing. I might be in the worst position of anybody here. I would ask that you not approve this development.
Thank you.
As far as I know, I'm the last speaker, so we appreciate your attention today. I'm David French, Seventeen-seventeen South One-seventieth Street. I'm here on behalf of four homeowners, four specific residential units and had provided materials with the proxies to speak on their behalf as well as my own ownership of land. I live within three hundred feet. My property would be on the map here, Seventeen-seventeen. So does not directly abut any of the development parcels, but is one step removed. I've, I can speak fast in three minutes or less. I have practiced it, but I may try to keep your attention a little longer. So I refer the board to my written comments. I thank you for having received them and appreciate that you would have reviewed them. So this is not a rehashment of those comments that I've presented. But in my prior career, I was a consultant for real estate developers in Phoenix and in Chicago, mixed-use, commercial use, vertical subdivisions, et cetera. When I learned after August first of what the proposal was for this land, I got really excited and got very, very charged up. That was around the time I met Doug Gibson. Brian Nolan and I engaged Doug Gibson ourselves to represent ourselves and other neighbors to help us articulate the, the high quantity of concerns that we had based on the whole project itself. So what, what got me started on August first was the hubris of this plan. The plan being both sides, both parcels. The proposed site plan had particulars that were impractical, factually naive. I refer you to Paula Wells' statements as well as Doug Gibson's in my letters. The hubris is the few pages that were presented attached to the plan, attached to the application for rezoning. The, the icing on the cake was when my neighbors, five of whom are here today, returned from August first, having met face-to-face with some McNeil representatives. And when I say McNeil, I mean the applicant, not any person. They reported back to me, five individuals in this room, that in, in their presence, the McNeil people said, this is a done deal, whatever we submit to the, the Planning Board will be approved, full stop. I found that so offensive that I took it upon myself to spend a lot of time working with consultants and others to validate the shortcomings of the plans, shortcomings and short-sighted ideas of what, what is proposed. So the, the plan is one of the most aggressive plans I've ever seen, is not one, one of my clients would have ever proposed. It inappropriately ties together two catty-corner parcels. It crams urban development into a suburban setting established forty years prior. It brings the risk of shoehorning future commercial uses via special use permits into a subdivision. I would contradict that the land to, to the south, the south parcel, is, abuts against commercial zoning. What it abuts against is a twenty-foot buffer that is to separate commercial use from residential use and was part of a special zoning plan. The proposal would bring four, four-story units, four-story buildings and three-story buildings and put them right next to a number of ranch-style homes, directly next to each other. And it relies on a tiny street that's twenty-two feet wide and does not have the capabilities of ingress, egress, and parking on multiple sides. The plan itself has under, is, is underparked, the mathematic equations don't have enough parking. And most concerning is how the south parcel development will directly deflate the property values for the homeowners who live adjacent on the south parcel, particularly Mr. Sedaris, who just spoke, and his neighbors. When his property values go down, my property value will go down because my house will be compared to houses that are within a hundred feet of my house. So I am directly impacted by the loss of property value. The upzoning is, is impermissible. And I ask that the Planning Board have entered into the record the, the legal analysis from the city attorney that it is permissible. I respectfully ask for that to be admitted to the record. The last item is the application, or lack thereof, demonstrates contempt for the development process and good planning. It is an incomplete submission that disguises various shortcomings that where the, the project is not feasible. The, the, you know, why did the Hundred-and-sixty-eighth right-of-way work take two years? Because there's a gosh darn river flowing across these properties and they had to build a mega bridge underneath Hundred-and-sixty-eighth for the water that traverses this land that allegedly is all pavable and all developable. It can go under Hundred-and-sixty-eighth. It, it defies reason that this, this type of density is possible. So, so for that reason, there shouldn't be an approval of rezoning today. Also, we asked for the, to be entered into the record McNeil's preliminary demand report and market study for how they determined the mix of units as well as the density for this project that has not been provided to the public or made a part of this record. We believe that no such study exists and McNeil's proposal is strictly to maximize profits and is not settled in logical, scientific market studies. The lack of traffic study for the new Hundred-and-sixty-eighth right-of-way where it intersects with Shirley is problematic for all of us. I know the residents that are not standing up also share the concern that there isn't a traffic study that exists that contemplates the post-Hundred-and-sixty-eighth improvements and a right-of-way expansion as well as something this dense at Shirley Street. I would argue this should have I would argue this should have its own curb cuts on 168th. It should be re, replanned, rethought out, maybe at a later date resubmitted to this board. But the, the idea of having multiple ingress, egress driveways hit, hit a tiny street that's 22 feet wide as well as have 261 residents traverse it is a bridge too far. The parking ratio for the apartments is still fuzzy to us. We ask for the developer to place into the record how it determined the parking ratio. Was it based on bedrooms? Was it based on number of units? We're, we're confused what, what the rationale is for that. We also ask that the developer provide visual graphics to the planning board for the record of how the intersection of the two private drives, meaning driveways from the north parcel and south parcel owned by McNeil, will intersect with Shirley. We also ask for evidence of their engineers' plans regarding how the wetlands impacts all of the planning here. We, we, we think the forethought is lacking and the planning is lacking. And for that reason, it's premature to petition for rezoning.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other opponents wishing to speak? You gotta come up and enter your name and address in the, in the record for us, please.
My name is Mark Coons. I live at 16811 Pine Street. This weekend, I was crossing the road, 168 from Shirley with my two boys. And I instructed them, we walk the bikes. We do not ride our bikes across the street. I looked up the street. There was no cars. We were halfway across the road and we had to start running. That's how fast those cars are coming down. That's the same intersection that you're talking about, having the entrance into 194 apartments. I couldn't get my kids across there safely. How are residents going to get out? And by the way, Pine Street, just north of Shirley, is a right turn only. You cannot turn left out of Pine Street. So that all goes into Shirley there. So all that's going to happen right there. And you can imagine folks that are not quite as quick at the steering wheel and all that kind of stuff, they're going to have to be double careful when that, that traffic zone hits there. That's the statement I want to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other opponents? Okay. Larry, you got a lot to cover.
I do indeed. I think I will be able to do that real quick. And then I'm going to call Kent up also, Rasmussen, to show maybe a couple of viewpoints. We were kind of marking where some of the people lived and what they're actually, what their actual views will look like. So I think that might be helpful. And then also the grade change, elevation change. So I was going to have him help me with that since his orientation of the site is probably a little clearer than mine. So I guess I'd start out, first of all, with the basis for the zoning and the reason why it's consistent with the master plan. So what, what the master plan says is that you can have up to 500 units adjacent to 165-acre mixed-use center, right? This is the mixed-use center. So adjacent to it, you can have up to 500 units. So we know from the planning department's count that there's 200 units that are spoken for, which means there's 300 units that are still available. We are only building 194 units. So that's where you get the densities that allow for R6 on the north side, which I believe are 17.9 units per acre. And on the night, then on the south side is where you get the basis for the R7, which is 24.85 units per acre. So that's the basis in the master plan. That is what makes this legal. It, that's what makes it not illegal spot zoning. It's actually entirely consistent with the master plan. I think that's represented in the planning department's recommendation as well. So the traffic study was not required because there's been a traffic study on 168th Street twice in the last couple of years, from my understanding. And it shows that there is no warrant for a traffic signal at 168th and Shirley. And, and so there wasn't a traffic study required with this particular rezoning. And again, remember, the, the plotting's already been done. So we're just talking about rezoning here. Rezoning is consistent with the comp plan. So there would not be a signal supported. And, and again, the public works department here and the traffic engineer is here to, you can ask questions of, and I think he can assure you that that is the case. Get to a couple other things. We got the density. We got the master plan. The, the US Army Corps of Engineer 404 permits in place. So there's no issue with respect to this development and how it relates to the wetlands that are currently out here on the site. There, there was, there was concerns about noise. Well, there's a noise ordinance in place. There's a lighting ordinance in place. We can talk about potentially the locations of the dumpsters. We can talk about with the neighbors, you know, maybe we limit the times that the trash pickup happens. I think they're showing a dumpster here. That could easily be moved to somewhere else on the site that's acceptable. So I think we can deal with those types of issues. But, but again, there's a lighting ordinance. There's a noise ordinance. There's post-construction stormwater management that, that we have to size these detention basins to take care of our stormwater. So there's no net increase in the runoff. So there's all these regulations in place for a reason and, and we're meeting all of them. And again, there is no zoning board of appeals requirements here. We're meeting all the site regulators, buffer yards, et cetera. There's, there's nothing out of the ordinary here. And so we're not overbuilding the site. And if you notice, there's a lot of green space with this site between the drainage way and the wetlands and up in this area, up in this area, up in this area. There is a whole lot of green space with this particular development. And we've been encouraged in the rec, report to try to preserve whatever trees we can. I think that they will try to do that. McNeil will. As far as the pool.
Larry, I interrupt you. Are there any, is this proposed on the interior of your site that line your property line adjacent to the single-family homes?
Is there? Fences? I don't believe there's any fences currently called for. No. So, you know, I, I think it's a better look without fences, if you ask me. But I guess that's something we can talk about. But.
I wasn't suggesting it. I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, I think Pat would rather landscape as a, a nice buffer. And, and you can see when Kent gets up and shows you some of the things. As far as the on-street parking, you know, that becomes a problem. There's always no parking signs on that side of the street as far as the pool. But we anticipate, there's a trail that comes from the parking lot to the pool area. We anticipate people utilizing that and not parking out on the streets. And I'm sure that McNeil's management company would also encourage that and discourage parking on the street. As far as the access points out onto Shirley Street, we have to meet the driveway regulations of the city of Omaha. So we're doing that as well. So overall, we're really meeting all the requirements of not only the master plan, but also the requirements of the zoning codes and, and the various parts of the Omaha municipal code that deals with land use. And so with that, you know, we did have a neighborhood meeting. I, I think what Pat said, which I think was not what really occurred. I think what Pat said at the neighborhood meeting, he said, not that it was a done deal. He said, this is the submittal that was made to the planning department. So this is what is on the planning board agenda of what you're seeing here tonight. That's all he said, from my understanding and my being there. So I don't think there was anything that, you know, this was a done deal, you know, in-your-face kind of thing. It was, look, this is what we've, this is what we've applied for. This is what will be before the planning board in September. And so I think that's what he was trying to get at. He said, you can all come down and raise your objections and, and state your piece. He, he said that as well, as, as did I. And, and people are here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kent real quick, just to kind of show some of the, the line of sites from some of the people that live in the area. Cause I think it's helpful to see.
Yeah, it's helpful to see Kent Rasmussen.
Yeah.
Kent Rasmussen, 2723 South 105th Avenue with McNeil Company. There was a lot of persons that talked that were in this area on Pine Street and 169th Circle. What I wanted to illustrate was creating some visuals to provide you guys of a section through this area of this building and this home. This building and this home, which is this illustration here. On the west side of this property here, you see a two-story home. And then here's our property here. So you can see that we are 10 feet lower than the existing homes. And it would be no different than a single-family home as a neighbor, as a two-story home right next to them. So there's a height difference there that the roof lines will actually be, the roof lines will be congruent with each other. Secondly, you know, providing that visual on a rendering aspect of 3D quality, you know, there's a person standing six feet tall in the grass and this is what they'd be seeing. Just provides some illustration for helpful.
Please, unless I call you up, you're not allowed to, to, to cross-examine. So do you have any other photos to show?
Um, I know there's another gentleman that we're, we're looking at the south property. And just to quickly maybe relieve some of that. This one, sorry. So this, this was.
As far as the site plan.
Yeah, I apologize.
Yeah. Sorry, we're both up here. You're talking about.
So this is this building here. There was a gentleman who was, you know, in this vicinity here. What he would see roughly is what this rendering shows. And it's the same thing where, you know, it's an eight-foot grade change between, you know, his home on grade versus ours. So it's not a towering project that's overlooking their home, but rather has the same roof lines.
Is this something that can be provided at a future date to any interested homeowner?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and lastly, I think, and then I'm, I think I'll conclude and we'll open it up for questions from us, is that we meet all the parking requirements that are required by this particular development. So there is not a short of, shortage of parking with respect to this particular development. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm hopeful I addressed most everything.
Actually, Pat, would you mind coming up? You probably know the drill. Name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Pat McNeil, 4666 South 132nd Street.
Yeah. So just one real quick question for you. This is zoned R3 right now. And you've owned the property for how long?
Over two decades, almost three.
Were you, were you initially planning to use this property for single develop, single-family development?
Never.
Never?
So when I purchased the property from Dave Jenke, a long time ago, I was told that the city would support me for a multifamily push. At the time, it was, it was zoned development reserve. That's why I purchased the property. So I went forward with that idea. They were going to support me. So my concern was all these years that I didn't want to move forward because I didn't want to start a project and have them to close down 168th Street. No way to get there. So I thought, that doesn't make sense. So, and at the time, in the CIP, which is your annual, kind of where we're going to spend our money, the road was supposed to be improved 25, 25 years ago. And it got postponed. And every year we were told it was back on. Every year we were told it was back on. It never happened. So there was a comment made that it went down in front of the planning board. This, this project, since I've owned it, has never been in front of the planning board. I've talked to the city several times and had their support, just like we have now. Because it was the right transition from higher density to lower density. And people, if you have a preference, really don't want to live on an artillery road, usually. So the multifamily is a nice segue to, to do a nice job and come up with what we thought was a, a nice project, but we hope it will be a very nice project. So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, that was, it was never intended to be single-family. Single-family don't, there's a 27-foot wall from the road to the bottom of the hole, this new culvert, 27-foot deep. What single-family home? Who would want to live there? Okay. So we can put a multifamily, put the, clean it up and landscape it. So that's what we're here asking you today for. Thank you for your time and, and patience. So. Any other questions?
No, I don't. Any guys have any? Yeah, Jeff or Bob, I don't care. You want to come up and talk a little bit about the traffic?
Hi. Good evening now. Jeff Reselman, City Traffic Engineer, Public Works. I think first I should start off with a little bit of background on the project that widened 168th Street. So that was a federally funded project. It went through a lot of study and environmental impacts. What it, from, from a, from an initial traffic study standpoint, the counts that were done in 2011, 2014, and 2018, they were not showing a lot of traffic using Shirley or Hickory on the other side of the street. Some changes through the design process occurred such that the accesses to the north of Shirley were modified a little bit outside of our normal master plan arterial access management policy. The reason is because those two neighborhoods on either side of 168th were platted back in the seventies before the current master plan, well before. And so we needed to find what intersection was going to be that quarter-mile full-access location. So Shirley and Hickory was identified as that full-access intersection, even though it's not perfectly at the quarter-mile. The intersection to the south at Francis would be the half-mile. And again, per, I, I mentioned in a, in a previous case here that our arterial access policy is to prioritize throughput and, and, you know, limit the conflict points along the arterial. So the, the full access at, at Shirley here was studied and determined at the time of design that it did not meet signalized warrants. That's why the project didn't install a traffic signal. And we looked at it twice. And I think that's what's being referenced as being studied twice. We looked at it a second time as part of a commitment from the environmental process that we would reroute the trips. And a gentleman spoke earlier that is correct, that there is a change at Pine to the north that is going to reroute trips, trips to Shirley. So the old counts that we have, I don't consider relevant any longer. We do need to do another count. We need to do it hopefully with 168th Street still open to the south and before 180th Street starts getting widened next year. That's just the count that we use for our evaluation of signal warrants and things of the like, like that. A, a new study is needed. The question is, is it the developer, which is normal for a development, or the city? In this case, there was nothing that we could point at to require the developer to perform a traffic study. Our driveway regulations, which is required per city code and approved by the city council, has a stipulation in there that at 100 trips in the peak hour is when the city can, may require a traffic study. In this case, also working against us is this is just a, a simple rezoning. It, it's not a, a use permit and it's not a plat. So whatever improvements are identified in a traffic study cannot be required by the developer to provide for. So really, I think a traffic study is needed. When I say study, I mean a new count, something that we would monitor on a, on a, on a regular basis as well. It's something we do across the city where development has reached close to full build-out. And, and, and we have a budget in our CIP for new traffic signals. Most of that budget is for replacing aged structures. But in, in cases like this, if a warrant was met, then a signal would likely be built. I couldn't say for sure whether a signal would be met, but I could say that without this development, based on our previous analysis, the signal wouldn't be warranted.
When was the last, when was the last one done?
Our last traffic count was in 2018.
Okay. So you're four years later. You got a major improvement.
And, and the change is mostly going to be because of the change in access. And I believe the left turns out of there were very, very low. That was telling me that it was very difficult to make a left turn in the previous lane configuration. So that's why they weren't being counted, is because they couldn't do it. Now with the new, or the new geometrics, I'm anticipating there to be a change in demand. And that's why we need to, to do an updated count.
You can't take a left pass.
That's, please. Okay. Anything else? No, I do not have anything else. Okay. Any questions for Jeff?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
I've heard from the proponents. I've heard from the, we've heard from the proponents and opponents. I'm going to close the public hearing. This time, I'm going to ask Garrett to make some comment.
I'm actually going to go up to the podium just to show a quick document.
This is new.
I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm sorry. All right, so what, this is part of the highly discussed master plan. This is from the land use element, page 31. I want to point out this figure because it is virtually the exact scenario. Sorry, I don't usually come up here and zoom in. Okay, so, to keep this brief, this triangle is representing a 165 mixed-use center. It is showing the office commercial at this hatch, okay? So, if you could imagine this foot flopped, if this is 168th and center, if you imagine just, you know, swap that, so it was reverse, and it was in basically a backwards L, it's showing the 500 units adjacent to the office commercial portion, okay? There's an example over here when the apartments are not adjacent to the office and commercial, and that is not allowed. In this situation, 165 mixed-use center, adjacent multifamily, it doesn't show the unlimited quarter-mile density that we talked about and that this document also refers to. But I just wanted to point that out, that even though the future land use map shows the site as being yellow or low-density residential, there's other components at work within the master plan that supports the multifamily adjacent to the mixed-use portion of a 165 center. And those apartments exceed the half-mile, okay? The commercial in the office is allowed to go to a half-mile from West Center Road, and then the apartments are adjacent to that. So, thank you for that opportunity to go up there. It's hard to explain that, so I think a visual is always helpful. There's a lot that's been discussed, and I don't need to go over everything and rehash, but this is a rezoning application. Unusually, this land was platted in late 1970s. As you saw from the previous Costco case or other developments and subdivisions that we review, there were a lot of conditions with those types of developments. That's usually how development works. However, these were platted in the late 1970s. They are platted lots. They're zoned R3. Now, you know, this is the proper procedure for a rezoning application. You know, there's an application to rezone. Ultimately, staff puts together a recommendation report. The planning board votes on the matter, which is a recommendation to the city council. Ultimately, city council has final authority on the rezoning. Parking is determined by bedroom count for multifamily. There are specific requirements if it's efficiency, one-bedroom, two-bedroom. I'm just going to kind of rattle off a few things, so bear with me. This site plan is not locked down in place. So, it is our belief that the applicant has full intentions of building what is proposed, but I just want to point out that this site plan is not locked down like it's, like it would be, you know, with a use permit or, you know, PUR, PUD. That's not the case. So, there can be components that change if this is approved and there is a submittal for a building permit. If they would, you know, consider moving the dumpsters, that would be more amenable, and those meet code, you know, they could do that. And basically, planning staff and other city departments would review the applicable building codes as they come in. You know, we have done a site plan review of this general rendering, and, you know, it is, it's my understanding that the development meets all the code, and obviously, heard the applicant refer to that. If it doesn't meet code, they would need to seek waivers from the zoning board of appeals, and there would be a notification of that public meeting as well. So, I'm not implying that there are any intentions of doing that, and they said they have no intention. So, I just wanted to bring it up, though, in case there are tweaks with the plan, if this is approved, when it actually gets to the construction phase. That's also when fire department reviews building permits. That's also when stormwater is reviewed for compliance. The wetlands are under the jurisdiction of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It's my understanding that has already been approved. I said at last month's meeting, and I might have mentioned it at the neighborhood meeting back in early August, our planning board agenda last month had 1,400 multifamily units on the agenda. With the ever-increasing cost of housing, we are only continuing to see more and more multifamily apartments, different types of housing. And I know the neighbors disagree, but this is generally a good thing. It's a good thing for neighborhoods to have diversity in their housing types, different options. You know, perhaps a resident who's lived in a beautiful, single-family home, four bedrooms, maybe their kids are all grown, maybe they want to stay in the neighborhood because they've made connections. I know our director, Dave Fansel, has always talked about this, and I think it's important, you know. You want to stay in that area. Having different housing style options is important, and, you know, this could be a possible, you know, home product that would fit for some of the neighbors. I, you know, it just, having those different types of housing throughout the city is important. I don't think I have much more to mention unless there are comments. There is also, as 168th Street is designated for a major commercial corridor, that is also part of the rezoning application. What that does is, that requires our highest requirement for building materials. It also increases the amount of landscaping that has to be done on the site, and generally, that is just overall ACI and MCC overlays are only for the benefit of the city, for adjacent properties, for the product itself. Oh, one more thing. We do not see that apartments are devaluing adjacent properties or neighborhoods. It is just nothing that we see. I, trust me, we've been doing this for a long time. I don't know, we've had a lot of real estate agents on this board, and they've said it as well. It's not something that we see. I know the fear is out there, but if this was approved, come back in two years, I doubt your taxes are going down, and that's representative of property values. So... So, with that being said, unless there's any questions, I will state our recommendation, which is pretty straightforward. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R3 to R6 and R7, and approval of the MCC overlay district.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our, at all? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the rezoning from R3 to R6 and R7, and approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district.
Second.
Great. Debbie, will you call the vote? Vote, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so, before we adjourn, need to approve the last month's meeting minutes, so I need a motion to approve...
Motion to approve last month's meeting.
Pre-meeting minutes?
Pre-meeting.
First?
Pre-meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Debbie, you recall the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Franklin, Moore, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, yes. And then the regular meeting minutes. I need a motion...
Motion to approve meeting minutes for the last four meetings.
Second.
Okay. Debbie, recall the vote on that.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore, Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Record the vote, please.
Uh, Moore, Morris?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Thank you, active chair. Good job.